In attendance. Good morning, I'd like to welcome council, members of the public, administration, presenters. And call to order the committee of the whole meeting for February eighth, two thousand twenty-two for the municipality of Jasper. To order at nine thirty-one AM. I respectfully acknowledge that the municipality of Jasper and Jasper National Park are on treaty six and eight territories. As well as Maiti region four. This land is the traditional territory, meeting ground, gathering place, traveling route and home for the Deneza. Nehiawak, Anishnabe, Secuetmik, Stony Dakota and Maiti. Councillors, you have your agenda in front of you. Are there any additions to the agenda? I see no hands. Do I have a councillor wanting to make a motion to approve the agenda? Councillor Wexler? I'll call the question all in favor. Agenda is approved. Council, you have in front of you the minutes from the January twenty-fifth committee meeting. Any changes to the minutes? Again, I see no hands. Do I have someone willing to? Make a motion to approve the minutes. Councillor Keller MP. I'll call the question all in favor. The minutes are approved. Moving on to item five presentations. I will pass the mic over to Mr. Given to introduce our presenter.
Thanks very much Deputy Mayor Hall. I actually won't do much of an introduction. I think Ms. Robbins from Community Futures West Yellowhead is well known to all of council. She's here to make a presentation about the organization and I'm going to pass it over to Nancy.
Thank you, CAO Given. Welcome, everybody. Nice to see you. So nice to see everybody in one place. Hopefully soon we'll be able to meet each other face to face again. I'm just here today to introduce myself, even though I know you all personally. It's important that you understand professionally what our organization is all about and to talk a little bit about how we work in Jasper. So we are a federally funded organization. We've been in existence for almost forty years and we are funded by what was formerly Western Economic Diversification. It's now Prairies Can. And we serve Jasper, Hinton, Edson, Grand Cash and the surrounding cooperatives and enterprises and Yellowhead County. So we are governed by Board of Directors that is owned by the five municipalities that we serve. So we have two councillors from each of our municipalities. And so in Jasper, we have councillor Demota and councillor Keller MP that sit on our board. So our main mandate is business coaching, business training, business financing and community economic development. I'm going to talk about a little bit about each of those and then talk about a little bit about what we're doing in the future for the pandemic. So in terms of business coaching, we are most popular services courses. We meet on one-on-one with people, mostly virtually right now. We do do some face-to-face visits. And we meet with people who are looking to start up. They have a business idea. They may want to expand or sell their business. They and we just work with them and help them get into that process. So we usually business planning is the number one thing that we help people with. We have a number of special programs as well, one being our Entrepreneurs with Disabilities program to help people that have identified as having barriers to employment. And we help them think about self-employment as an option for them. Project Gonzalez, our women's entrepreneurship program where we work with women in specialized programming that meet their needs for female entrepreneurship. And some of you are very familiar with Lemonade Day. Lemonade Day again this year is June eighteenth. So if you are looking to drink a copious amount of sugary. Lemonade juice made by children, you are more than welcome to join us on June eighteenth as a Dutch. We also have a recipe competition in May month, which is a lot of fun. Mayor Ireland and councillor Keller MP always join us and we're looking forward to having new councillors this year as well. And new to our organization is the Digital Services Squad. This is a partnership project that we're involved in with Business Link out of Edmonton. And it's an eighteen-month grant that we have to hire a youth that will work in our communities to help people get online. We have heard in the pandemic, it's the number one, one of the number one struggles that businesses have. So Business Link had a great opportunity for us to access that program. We hired Emily Fair and Grant Cash and she'll be working with our businesses. To do a bid assessment of where they are digitally and what works for them, whether it be the chamber market. Whether it be being on social media, designing a website, doing some training, just learning about their branding. So we're excited about that new program that we're launching this month. In terms of our business training, we really work to meet the needs of our clients. Right now, we're hearing a lot of business owners are overwhelmed with the two-year mark of the pandemic. And so for the this month and for next month, every Monday night, we're doing a live mental health series on with Trevor Haas and Nathan. On coping in a pandemic and some of the things to think about because we're hearing loud and clear that that's what our business owners are looking for right. The the host muted me. You know, I've gone too long. Deputy Mayor Hall, is I talk too much? Business financing is probably our biggest program. Right now, we have almost seven million dollars in loans in the region. And really, it's through our regular loan program. We've partnered with the town of Edson to do a pandemic recovery loan. We've been issuing money to Edson startups for the past year and been working really closely with the town of Edson on that program. And of course, we've done our regional relief and recovery fund, which added a hundred and six loans to our portfolio in a very short period of time. So we're very busy in our financing program and with any recession that you do see. It's not uncommon for community futures to become very busy after a time of economic uncertainty. And we're really feeling that crunch right now. We have a new business analyst, Anita Smith, that has been promoted. Our longtime business analyst, Tim Shane, just retired in the fall to go on to other adventures and. We are finding that. That little bit of a change in our organization means people have noticed us and we're really busy with financing. With the candy economic development, you may have seen our I am local campaign on Facebook. We've done videos with local businesses. You'll see some councillors and people from Jasper coming up pretty soon. We spent about a week and a half traveling around the region doing what it means to be local and what it means to shop local in the West Yellowhead. We are doing a business walk in Jasper on March tenth. We'd love to have all of you come join us if you can. I'll be reaching out to you pretty soon by email. This is a great opportunity for you to reach out and talk to your businesses. I'm hoping the Chamber and the Board will be able to join us. Some councillors, Mayor Ireland, who at some administrations, a great opportunity for new administration to get out. And an open house on February twenty-second. Here in Jasper, where we're, we've tried many times to meet our clients face to face and we're just going to do it. And we're going to on February twenty-second. Have an open house here where you can come by and meet our team. Pandemic recovery, of course, is number one on our list and it really needs to be the focus of where we are in the next year to two years moving forward. We've heard loud and clear that there's three main priorities of our small businesses. The first being labor market attraction and retention, a little bit outside the scope of community futures. But we're looking to our chambers and our employment centers and to partner to really put the focus. On how we can support our small business owners who are very tired at the two-year mark. Digital access, of course, is what we've heard. We need, it's not as big in Jasper, but we're seeing in our other communities that there's really a need. To help people become more digital. And of course, supply chain. There's not much that Candy Futures can do about a supply chain problem, but what we can do is help our our local businesses promote their products. And talk about shopping local and help people get their local products into the supply chain and local food and local. Everything that's local and and reduce our dependency upon that supply chain as much as we can. So I'm available anytime to answer your questions. If it's not today, you know where to find me. I will be in touch about the business walk. And a reminder email about the open house. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Robbins. Any comments or questions from council? Councillor Demota?
I'm just grateful that Ms. Robbins is here and. I I'm going to ask her to schedule in for a monthly update because then I don't have to do it as part of my council report and. Quicker and more concise than what I can deliver anyway. So very grateful and and as I expressed before. It's been a huge eye-opener for me to be part of this this board and this group. And yeah, I'm growing stronger as a councillor. And understanding our region much more. So glad to be part of it and thank you again.
Thank you, councillor Demota. Councillor Keller MP.
Thanks Nancy. Awesome presentation. Nancy, um, do you want to just do a quick update on the triple R F loans and how the government have extended the repayment? Because I know a number of businesses within Jasper.
Yes. Oh, the elephant in the room. So as you're probably aware, the government of Canada offered a tremendous amount of relief funding throughout the pandemic. One being the SEPA program, which is the Canada Emergency Business Account Program. And the Community Futures Program nationally was awarded the Regional Relief and Recovery Fund. This fund was for businesses that were unable to access the SEPA program. In the West Yellowhead, we did three point five million dollars worth of loans to a hundred and six different, a hundred and six loans in total. For sixty thousand dollars. The idea behind, it's in two segments. So the idea behind the first part of the loan is they receive forty thousand dollars. They pay it back by a deadline, then ten thousand dollars is forgiven. They also were eligible for an expansion loan of twenty thousand dollars. So if they pay back the original thirty. Are forgiven with the ten and then pay back another ten on the twenty. They are forgiven ten thousand dollars. So for a sixty thousand dollar loan, if it's all paid back, they only have to pay back forty. Originally in the program, the goalpost was December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-two. We had planned for our clients to put a sense of urgency into our clients this year to get those funds repaid. And in the past month, that goalpost got moved. It is now December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Which give clients an extra year to pay back that forty thousand dollars. We are going to be starting to work with our clients in this program very quickly because. Even though they've extended that forgivable amount period for another year, they have not added another year onto the end of the program. So what will happen is the deadline is December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. On January first, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-four. They will instantly owe sixty thousand dollars at four percent interest and have to pay that sixty thousand dollars back with interest in two years. Instead of the original three that was guaranteed. So I'm not sure about you, but I know I would struggle to pay back sixty thousand dollars in two years. So with interest. So I think. It is part of our plan for the next year to create that sense of urgency and of our clients getting on a payment plan. Of paying back those amounts so they're able to access those forgivable amounts so that they're able to put that cash into their business. And yeah, it's really changed the landscape a little bit for businesses right now. At twelve months is a long, an extra amount of time that is a bit longer than anticipated. So that's where we're at with that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from council? Mayor Ireland.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Hall and thank you Nancy. A really thorough and brief report, much appreciated. I just wanted to touch on the the general loan portfolio. I think you mentioned that you have about seven million dollars out in loans. And without identifying clients, of course, are you able to? Give some indication of roughly the percentage of those loans that might be out to Jasper businesses?
Yep. So the seven million includes the triple RF. And so if we look at that, that portfolio was very heavily prescribed for Jasper. Mainly because of the unique needs of a pandemic in the national park and the tourism industry and it has taken in the pandemic. In terms of the total loan portfolio, I'd say Jasper is sitting at between thirty and thirty-five percent of our portfolio is sitting in Jasper. And if we look at industry, of course, we will see that the main industry, of course, in Jasper is accommodation and food and also retail trade. And that's where the majority. Of that portfolio sits in Jasper. And also, I would say of that thirty-five percent, I would say ninety-five. Percent of it is tourism-based for that portfolio. So a very healthy portfolio in Jasper. Jasper clients work hard. They work really, really hard and we have very few problems with our loan portfolio in Jasper.
Thank you very much. They they do work hard, but you work hard to assist them and I really appreciate the work that you do there. Thank you.
Mayor Ireland, any other comments or questions for Nancy? I see no hands. Thank you very much Nancy for coming. And yes, I do agree you're probably faster and more concise than councillor Demota. And speaking of.
I'm not coming every month. He has to do his job.
And just touching on shopping locally, I learned recently, every dollar you spend in your community will change hands seven times.
Yes.
Before it leaves, which is yes, shop local. So thank you very much for coming today and excellent.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Hall. Thank you. Be well, everybody.
All right, moving on to item six, business arising from minutes. I think I'm going to pass this back to Mr. Given.
Sure. Thanks very much Deputy Mayor Hall. Just very briefly, at the last committee meeting, council had requested that administration provide an update. On the process for reviewing the twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-two council strategic plan. And I appreciated the, you know, the graciousness and the questions to say, you know, how hard would it be to do? So administration has had a look. And can, I can report that we will come back at the next committee meeting with a review and a bit of an update. We, there are six priority areas in council strategic plan. Those six priority areas contain thirty main goals and about forty-five sub-goals approximately, depending on how you count them. So our plan is to essentially go through and try to capture. The work that happened over the last term and assign it to those goals and match them up so we can demonstrate, you know, what progress has been made on the different priority areas. Appreciating that much of the work over the last term was really focused on the pandemic. And that really consumed a lot of council and the organization's attention. But I can report today that administration will bring to the next committee meeting a update. On the twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-two council strategic plan. And at that time, you know, if council identifies other items that you know that we did. Then by all means, you can add them, but administration will take a first cut at that. It doesn't look like it'll be too burdensome. And I think just as long as sort of the expectation is that administration will do our best to identify the work that happened over the last. Term, we'll slot it in and match it up against the goals. And then council can sort of check that for correctness and see if there's anything that we missed. But that's that, that's our, that's the plan on how we're going to provide an update to you, council.
Thank you very much, Mr. Given. Councillor Melnick.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Hall. I'd just like to express council's appreciation to administration. To be able to do that report, I think it's going to serve us well. As we move forward in strategic planning and and it's a really welcome news. Thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks very much, councillor Melnick and. Deputy Mayor Hall, maybe if we're finished on this item and before we jump into new business. If there's just a brief second, I would want to acknowledge that we have a new member of our team joining us. We have. All the rest of administration here, but Christopher Reed, our new director of community development. Is joining us for his first committee, the whole meeting back in Jasper. And so I just wanted to acknowledge that Christopher's here and this seemed like the appropriate spot to to squeeze that into the agenda. Certainly an important addition, given the importance of the community development function handling. Community and family services and culture and recreation, really important addition to our organization. And we're so happy to have Christopher joining us. So Christopher, I think if you're online. Maybe give a little wave and say hello to council, just so that we make sure that we we document on the record that you were here. The other thing that will happen is that I will have introduced him and he won't be here. No, no, of course he is.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Yes, welcome back, Christopher. There he is.
Sorry, you you catch me between offices, but I am certainly participating, well, listening at this point and. I I will just say that I'm thrilled to be back and enjoying already my second day of what I'm calling my Groundhog Day. Do you over?
Absolutely. Thanks so much, Christopher and council. Thanks for letting me make that brief introduction to somebody who probably needs no introduction into Jasper and to the organization. But certainly happy to have Christopher here and to have our senior leadership team within the municipality. Fully staffed, I think that that's going to serve the organization well and we're looking forward to hitting the ground running. And working with council over the course of this term. So thanks very much Deputy Mayor Hall. And with that, I'll turn it back to you to take us into the next agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Given. I feel like we, any other questions about the strategic plan update? I think, I feel like we've passed that one. Okay, moving on to new business item number seven point one. Sidewalk seating and retail area expansion program. Mr. Given, I will pass, pass the floor back to you.
Sure. Thanks very much Deputy Mayor Hall. Mr. Don is going to handle this report and the next one, the paid parking residence exemption. Just in terms of introing it though and context, council knows that there's a high degree of interest in the sidewalk seating and retail area expansion program. It was very successful last year and administration is bringing forward this report. Really to get direction at a high level on some of the primary considerations. While acknowledging that, you know, there'll be more detailed work to happen as administration collaborates with business owners at Parks Canada on the actual implementation. But the report here is to set the stage for that, looking back at two thousand twenty-one. And making some recommendations on moving forward. So with that little brief introduction and context setting, I'll hand it over to Christine.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Good morning, mayor and council. Like Mr. Given outlined, the report before you today suggests that committee direct administration is what prefaces all the motions. So essentially. This is our assessment of where where things are and what the challenges are and what the items to resolve. That are before you and we've suggested some approaches to resolve some of those challenges. But this is very much a discussion item this morning and administration is hoping to get some direction from council so we can refine the program and get closer to. What it might be for the upcoming season. Having that said, we appreciate that timeliness is is important as business owners prepare to. Implement any of the changes. And there is a bit of additional information that I would like to share with council this morning that I've managed to confirm yesterday. So that was after the report was published. But in essence, in my position as Director of Protective Services, ensuring that the public safety of our residents and. Business owners and visitors is looked after is one of the priorities. And so. Risk assessment in relation to patios and how we're proposing to develop them permanently. So in two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one, we saw some temporary patios being set up and jersey barriers were used in the parking lane. To protect the people that were using them essentially. And from a risk assessment, you will hear from every risk assessor out there that that is the way to go. Having that said, that conflicts with the architectural motif that Parks Canada would like to see. And we, there was an understanding that that was always going to be a temporary measure. So we ran the proposal of wooden boardwalks is our preferred approach. As in the patios will be located on the sidewalk and the pedestrian traffic would be rerouted in the parking lane through wooden boardwalks. In order to do that, it is possible, but there are some mitigation measures that our risk assessors are recommending. And I won't go into the detail of what those are, but those are the types of details and plans that we need to firm up. One with Parks Canada in relation to the motif, but second with our operations team and the business owners themselves and and our bylaw department, of course, which is heavily involved in this project. To make sure that they can be built to spec and be consistent and give us a program that is a permanent program that looks good in the community and that business owners can feel safe investing in. So a wooden patio by itself is a bit of a concern from a risk assessment perspective, but there are mitigation measures. Like placing a jersey barrier or a planter. So a heavy planter that would be placed upstream in the parking lane from where the cars are coming from. Would be perceived by our risk assessors as something that would be beneficial and that would allow us to. Move forward with a project of this nature. The city of Edmonton's been using metal bases to the boardwalk itself. So if a vehicle hits it, it's not just a wooden structure that could. Be impacted more strongly. Reflective tape, there's different things we can do anyway, and those details are still to be ironed out. But I think what I want to highlight mostly is. That it took us quite a bit of work to land on the proposal that you see before you. And that was in collaboration with Neil Jones, who's our licensing and enforcement manager, Maureen McKinnon at Parks Canada. So in terms of. What cat Parks Canada would consider for approval. And also with our local health inspector in terms of respecting the Alberta Health Services measures, not only with regards to COVID, but with regards to best practices for restaurants. And that's the motivation behind keeping the patios immediately adjacent to the business premises and not having. Servers crossing the general pedestrian traffic on the sidewalk to get to a patio. Having that said, in the report, there's quite a bit of information in there. We are considering exemptions. So for people that may not have. Business frontage immediately on the sidewalk, it could be challenging for them to convince their neighbors to let them have a sidewalk. Seating area. So patios in the parking lane could also be considered, but they would not be the norm. They would be the exception is how administration. Would like to see that part of the program unfold. Having that said, there are several recommendations in front of you with different areas, including design and motif, multi-year approvals. What we do with phasing out some of the past, so two thousand twenty, twenty twenty-one. Patios and for how long they could be considered to be approved or not. And again, there's an implication on the motif there with Parks Canada. Fees, seating capacity. And streamlining applications for patios that were existing and that no major changes are being proposed. So. Having that said, I'm happy to stand by and answer questions, Deputy Mayor Hall. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nidon. I'm going to turn to council for questions and comments. Councillor Melnick.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Hall, through you to. Miss Nidon, I see that the recommendation. Indicates a phase out of the. Current situation in a single season. Is it a possibility that that could be phased out over a couple of seasons? It's just, it's the recommendation, but is Parks. Canada amiable to to allowing a phase out over a couple of seasons?
Thanks. Thank you, councillor Melnick.
Deputy Mayor Hall, through to councillor Melnick. We did place that recommendation in there and. The clarity of the wording there, that the right, that the. Legacy installations that are not consistent with the new approved motif be phased phased out and only be considered for a single approval, single season approval. That would be for patios that currently have a boardwalk. So you are reading the report correctly in that. The use of jersey barriers from Parks Canada's perspective was a temporary measure and is not a viable option moving forward. Having that said, we are here to receive direction from council. We could. Go back to Parks Canada and and have that conversation with them, but that is a motif item. Therefore, it is non-discretionary and that authority rests with Parks Canada. So. We could receive direction back on that item, but that is not within municipal jurisdiction to allow at this stage. I see Mr. Given is on the screen, might have a more detail.
Yeah, just in addition to what Mr. Don shared, I think the the other nuance there. Is that the recommendation says that they, if the installations that are not consistent. Are being recommended for single-year approvals. It doesn't necessarily mean that they would all have to change in a single year. It just means that. If you conform to the motif, you can secure a multi-year approval. So you can have more confidence that you will be approved for your patio installation. You know, going forward for up to three years. The intent here is. The intent here is to provide some incentive for people to move forward to conforming, not necessarily to make them change everything all at once. Basically saying, if you want to have that certainty, then the best way to get that is to ensure that you conform. We cannot guarantee that you'll be able to run in non-conformance past 2022. You may be able to, but you may not. And so I guess that's just the nuance that I'd raised, Counselor Melnick, is that, you know, this is not saying that anybody needs to stop what they're doing immediately in 2022. It is saying that municipal administration cannot guarantee that parks will continue to be amenable to non-standard installations going forward. What we can and have discussed with parks is that if people conform with the motif, parks is very supportive of providing multi-year approvals. So sort of that, there's a slight nuance there. You know, we're not saying that they must be discontinued. We're saying that we cannot guarantee that they'll be able to be used past 2022.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that additional clarity in that there is some concern in the business community that monies were spent last year. And a one-year phase out would mean that there'd be additional funds that would need to be spent to be compliant for multiple years of certainty of a sidewalk cafe. And so I'm just wondering if, like I said, if there was a possibility of a couple of years of crossover to kind of spread that out for business owners as we're coming out of this COVID period.
Maybe Deputy Mayor Hall, you know, I think the other, so we heard administration heard quite clearly from the business community that there was a need for certainty around the program. And we heard from parks, there was a need for, you know, better conformance to the motif. And so we're trying to sort of bring those two things together. And the way that we were seeing that was saying, providing some incentive for people to move towards conformance. And the incentive being that they could secure that longer term approval, which would also mean that the rates would be fixed. You know, you would pay once for the three years or you would have your rate fixed for each of the three years. On a single year approval, we can't necessarily, you know, at this time, we're not saying what the rates will be in 2023 for single year approvals. We're also not saying what the standards will be in 2023. A single year approval is just that. You can keep using the thing that you've got for the next year. But we can't guarantee that you'll be able to continue to use it the year after that. If you want to know that you can use your installation for the next three years, at least, the best way to do that is to conform to the motif requirements for parks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Counselor Kelleher-MP.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall, through you to Mr. Given and Mr. Don. The fees to be increased reflect equivalent of 25% of paid parking. So my question is, we have many restaurants, some are coffee shops. So are we proposing that every restaurant pays the same?
Missed it on.
Deputy Mayor Hall through to Counselor Keller-Hermpy. The proposed fees, as outlined in the report, are based on a per stall cost. So because we are using the paid parking comparison to see what generate revenue generation could look like there, that's where we came up with a fee per stall. So you will note that in the past, our fees were based on number of seats. The town of Banff currently has a number of tables and a number of seats, so a fee for each. And essentially, this item is here for discussion by council and direction ultimately, whether that's today or later. But to be more reflective of the cost of using public space for commercial purposes in the downtown area. And now that we have this paid parking comparison, so we recognize that the paid parking fees are not of the right scale to be applying to a sidewalk seating model. But this was, that 25% aligns with more so with what Banff is doing in terms of fees. And we thought that was a good starting point for that conversation. And in discussion with Mr. Given this morning, the other item to consider when it comes to fees is what we've budgeted for, for revenue. So for sidewalk seating in the 2022 operating budget, there is no revenue projection. So any dollars that are collected are sort of additional and have not been accounted for above and beyond what we collected last year. But having that said, we did project some revenue for paid parking. And so each stall that is not in the paid parking inventory then reflects a decrease in the paid parking revenue. So although the program fees are not directly accounted for in sidewalk seating, they are in a way accounted for in the paid parking. So that's something for council to consider that whatever the cost is set for those patios will directly impact the amount of dollars we'll be able to collect for paid parking.
Thank you, Senator.
Counselor Demora.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. Just for council, doing the math and looking at the the schedule that's in front of us. You know, 184 days, that's like potential. And I just, I don't think that we have Banff level tourism. Even though I don't mind looking at other municipalities that have, you know, set the bar in certain areas. So, you know, and then the other thing too is patios are, they're a coin toss in the summertime, you know, because it's heavily dependent on weather. And I need a little bit more clarification on what Parks Canada is allowing for coverage. If there is any style of umbrella that's acceptable and can be used for the seating, if that ends up getting approved. So that has a lot of bearing on. So I don't think that personally 184 days of potential revenue. You know, starting May long weekend and ending in October, or sorry, the beginning of May and the end of October is 100% accurate. I would probably look at maybe doing calculations around 120. It's not, I don't have the right math to do that. Maybe if we had better information or more information from the pilot project to help, you know, kind of pinpoint that down a little closer. Averaging that out, I think that asking people to pay, you know, a quarter of that even if you try to break it down per seat. And I'm just going to wrap up by saying on this point that I've been in contact with some of the restaurants. And it seems like on average, there's about 12, 13 seats per stall that gets you, some are able to maximize more. But with social distancing in the last couple of years, it's some, a lot of places were 10 seats per stall and some managed to get about 18 in there. So I'd say about 12. So then, you know, you do the math, 120 days divided times 36 and then divide that by the amount of seats. And then asking, you know, to pay for construction of new material and things like that. You know, I think it's a bit of a cumbersome ask. So I think that we should all like take some time and do the math and see what might be reasonable to ask right now.
Thank you, Counselor Demora. The questions or comments from council? Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. I wanted firstly acknowledge all the work that's gone into this. I appreciate that. And I appreciate the tenor of the relationship we have with Parks Canada and working collaboratively to make this work in the interests of our community and the business sector in particular. And I don't expect staff to be either advocates or or otherwise of the Parks Canada requirements. But I continue to be somewhat mystified as to the role of the architectural motif guidelines as it relates to patios in particular. So I read through the guidelines on the weekend, all 88 pages of them. The introduction gives a clear indication that they are to be guidelines, not regulations. And yet the report, at least in one spot, indicates that there are some aspects, and it's Counselor Demora just touched on umbrellas and tents. Where apparently it is non-discretionary and yet the guidelines are recommended approaches. But it's clear in the introduction to the guidelines that there can be relaxations if you can find another way to meet the objective. And I note that with respect to climate considerations as a separate and distinct item in the guidelines. There is an indication that public outdoor spaces should be attractive and usable for as much of the year as possible. If there is a limited number of days, and there is, we're not talking about year-round outdoor patios yet, but we could get to that. But even in those 184 days, there are going to be cloudy, cold, rainy days. They are going to be, if last year is an indication, 40-degree days when a bit of shade is not only welcome, it's required. If the objective is to make outdoor space usable, I am troubled by a guideline, which apparently is inflexible, that you can't have a roof over a patio or some sort of covering for the elements, whether it's the sun or the rain, to make these places actually usable for more of the time. The whole tenor of this seems to be that whatever we do, it must be consistent with the guidelines. So my real interest is in knowing exactly what the guidelines are intended to say or how they are interpreted by those who get to interpret them as it relates to patios. And whether there is in fact an opportunity for any business owner to appeal. Again, the introduction to the guidelines talks about the potential formation of an advisory group to heal, to hear applications for relaxation. It's not clear to me whether the existing Planning and Development Advisory Committee is able to hear appeals under the architectural motif guidelines. It's a matter of great concern, I think, for the business sector and for the community generally. And just to go a little bit further, I would suggest one of the reasons that this council and previous councils have advocated for a transfer of jurisdiction so that these sorts of matters can be addressed and responded to at a local level. And it, to me, it is very concerning that we don't necessarily know how the guidelines are going to be interpreted, what applies to what. And it leaves our business sector in particular in a hugely uncertain situation, as Mr. Given just indicated. Just because they say yes today, doesn't mean they'll say yes next year. And with the uncertainty of that compounded on the uncertainty of the last two years of COVID. I think we should pause now to work with Parks Canada to sort out the question of how the architectural motif guidelines are to apply. Given that, I know that there is urgency. So if we can advocate for another season of what we have had for the last two years while we work on what the real rules are, I think that would be the solution that would be most amenable to moving our community forward. I, sorry, Counselor Hall or Deputy Mayor Hall, I am simply not as brief as Ms. Robbins.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. Any other questions or comments from council? Counselor Wexler.
My comment really goes back more to the, the fee, the increase in fee collections. And I wanted to express my concern about that large increase in a time where there's so much strain and stress on, on small businesses. And I guess in thinking about it, if we were, if we did need to have those those additional dollars, I wonder if we could revisit the paid parking to the year round rather than putting more strain on small businesses that are struggling in this pandemic context.
Thank you, Counselor Wexler. Any other comments or questions from Counselor Kelleher-MP?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall, through you to Mr. Given, administration. And you may not have the answer today, but just looking back at the notes from 2021. Back in 2020, we brought in $9,680. I am curious what, with, I think we had some more patios last year. If we know the revenue that were brought in in 2021 from the sidewalk seating.
Thank you very much, Counselor Keller-Hermpy. Yes, it was just over $17,000, $17,325 from patio seating last year. So thanks very much to Ms. Nidon and and the team for collecting that information and having it ready. So just over $17,000.
Thank you for that, Mr. Given. May I ask one more question, Deputy Mayor Hall? I'm curious, within the report, we talk about sidewalk seating, but there is some businesses that have extended their patios into their parking lots. And how does that reflect it? Like, so would that be allowed to continue or would they have to? Because now their parking has gone to the street. I'm just kind of curious how they would fit into this model.
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Hall for Counselor Keller-Hermpy. Administration hasn't taken a view of whether somebody chooses to utilize their own private property to do outdoor seating. Parks Canada may have a view on that because if their development was approved with this requirement for a certain number of onsite parking stalls, then the business owner would be responsible for working with Parks Canada. They're no longer in compliance with what their development was approved for. I mean, this is the other side of the municipality not having land use and development jurisdiction. It is not our issue. And so it is really up to the property owner to choose how they use their private property. And if their use of their private property puts some outside of compliance with how their, what their approvals were for, then they have to take that up with the appropriate authority, which would be Parks Canada.
Thank you, Mr. Given.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Counselor Demora.
Okay, so I roughly did the math, you know, with, with the formulas that we have here. And I just did it on 120 days times $36 per day. And I did it on an average seat, 12 seats. So at 25% of a stall cost, it works out to 75 cents per seat per day on the average, because some, some places have a little bit more seats and some less. So that works out to about $1,100 per stall that you have to pay for revenue based on 120 days. So a lot of people are using two stalls. So that's $2,200. If you fact, if you factor that in as a fixed cost and then, you know, you have to reflect that revenue, make up that revenue in your prime costs as, you know, things that restaurants in particular have control over. You're pretty much eating up all your profit from the summertime just to have that availability in the seats for many places. There are other places that have, you know, a different model and, you know, their margins might be a little different. But on average, you know, just having experience in the business, for some businesses, that's easy to make up in a couple of months or a month or so. And then some, it's like, it's a, it's a summer-long struggle. People, there are businesses in this community that don't finish off paying their winter expenses until July, August sometimes. So, you know, we have to consider those things and take them in consideration. I like the formulas that are here, but I think they need to be refined and so that we can have a better judgment on, on what might be better measures to go forward with. I do have a couple more comments, but as we're speaking mostly of restaurants right now, that's what I'm basing my correspondence on.
Thank you, Counselor Demora. Counselor Kelleher-MP.
I do agree with, thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. I do agree with Counselor Wexler and Counselor Demora. You know, I see these businesses struggling and we're in COVID, we're not out of it yet. And I understand that paid parking is very And I understand that paid parking is very important for alternative revenue. I was at the post office the other day and I ran into businessperson and very interesting conversation. And they said, if we're going to make parking lots paid, then we should charge for every parking lot. And maybe we need to consider that. They said, you know, if the parking lot down at the other end in town is open, more than those businesses more people are down that end, more access to those parking lots, it's unpaid. So they felt that, you know, if council is going to go that route, they were fine with it, but then we should make all parking lots paid. So as Counselor Wexler pointed out, rather than going year-round with paid parking, maybe we consider making all the parking lots paid. That will help the revenue within paid parking. But I don't know if charging every restaurant for twenty-five percent of full stall is the way to go this year. Maybe again, it becomes like the motif, it's a phased-in approach that we charge so much this year, so much next year, and that's the goal that we get to. But many small restaurants just can't afford it. You know, as Ms. Robbins pointed out today, community futures that Jasper has thirty-seven percent of the loan portfolio. And a number of those are the triple RF loans that all come into a year from now instead of next year. But, you know, a lot of people have heavy debt from the pandemic. And, you know, we put up our taxes twelve point five percent. We brought in the three C model. For some, it'll be a thirty-seven percent increase. But as was pointed out last week, for some, it'll be a four hundred percent increase. So it just seems, I think, some of our businesses are seeing more debt mounting and mounting. And I think, you know, going forward, you know, we have to phase in the motif, we have to phase in the price increase. I think they all know that down the line, if they want to do this, they're going to have to pay for it. But I think we're going to have to have a cautious approach. That's just my opinion.
Thank you very much, Counselor Keller-Hrampe. Counselor Demora?
Well, I appreciate Counselor Keller-Hrampe addressing the latter part of what I wanted to address. So that cuts down my airtime and that's probably more welcome by the rest of council and people viewing. I just for, now that we're expanding the conversation, I wanted to thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. Through you to Mr. Given, just to talk about the potential, because this report also describes retail. So you know, we've heard from retailers that it may be a little difficult for some to have to use the parking stalls or even sidewalks for merchandise. There are some businesses, and I'm going to bring up the motorcycle tour business that, you know, might have an opportunity here as well when it comes down to using up a public parking space, a paid parking space. So I want to know what the opportunities there. Are they going to be treated the same as restaurants when it comes to the use of that space?
Deputy Mayor Hall for Counselor Demora. Yes, and that's a part of administration's intent with recommending that the pricing, whatever the price is set, that it be based on the per-stall price rather than a per-table price. Obviously, a per-table price is challenging to calculate for businesses that are not restaurants. And, you know, the asset that we have is the public space. And so the intent was to say, what is the value, the appropriate value of this public space? And once council sets that value, we would apply that to any business of any type that wanted to use that public space. So it would be applied consistently. Any business that wished to operate on the public space would be charged the same rent, if I can use that term loosely.
That was good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Demora. Any other comments or questions from council? I would like to say a couple of things as well. Oh, maybe I'll go really quickly first, Mayor Ireland, and I'll get to you next. I also do think these increases are too much for this year. As Nancy Robbins was saying earlier, we're at the two-year market this pandemic. People aren't even recovering yet. People are just learning how to live with this new normal. And the labor, you know, go back to labor and market, our retailers, our restaurants need to know what's happening so they can hire their staff. There's already a shortage of staff. It's very difficult to find help in the kitchen, help out front. They're definitely, this is definitely time-sensitive. Are we able to, is a question for Mr. Given, keep it as it is for this year? I know that was roughly answered. I did also have a hard time with, not a hard time, but just this report was slightly confusing. I would like to see us phase this out over three years. That might, that might not even be enough time for a lot of people to recover. And I know that restaurants and people that took advantage of this program are well aware that this is going to be something down the line that will cost money. But I I don't feel right charging someone thirty-three hundred dollars who paid eight hundred dollars this past year, which that eight hundred dollars was probably already a stretch. So are we able to keep things as they are? I guess the answer is back to parks, but for this season coming up, is that a possibility?
Sure. Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Hall. Well, just to be clear, the administration recommendation is, has a bunch of variables in it, and council can choose to alter those variables in any way that you wish. And this is our professional advice on what makes, in our view, in administration's view, the most sense, trying to sort of accommodate all those separate interests. That said, if council said this rate, you know, this valuation is not appropriate, given these other considerations, that's totally within council's jurisdiction. If council says this timeline, you know, we should give approvals for five years or ten years for patios or only one year. You know, from an administrative perspective, we would have some advice for you. The time, you know, long enough to give certainty, it needs to be multiple years, but going too long, you might tie yourself into a system that you can't change, right? And so that's where three years kind of makes sense. It's, you know. But if council decided it should be five years or it should be two years, administration is happy to take that direction. With respect to, you know, the moving towards a more uniform sort of implementation and a motif question, administrations have to take whatever direction council sets. And we will test that with our colleagues at Parks and see if, you know, if it's able to move forward. If we run into any barriers, then we may need to come back to council. And I think that that also applies, Deputy Mayor Hall, to the idea of saying, well, can we just keep running the way that we did in twenty twenty-one? Certainly from an administrative perspective, that's pretty easy to do. We don't have to change anything. I think the question for council is, is the summer of twenty twenty-two exactly the same as the summer of twenty twenty-one or the summer of twenty twenty? And was the implementation of patios exactly what, you know, what council desired, you know, is, did everybody in the community think that what we saw in twenty twenty-one was exactly how we would like it to be going forward? And that's an open question for council, I think, to decide. But from an administrative perspective, absolutely, if council gave the direction that we should run the twenty twenty-two season exactly the same as twenty twenty-one, then we will go away and we'll take that direction. That is, that is not a problem for us. The only thing that I would say that we didn't know in twenty twenty-one that we do know now is about the value of the public space. And so that is new information that council did not have before and the community did not have. Administration is very confident in the numbers because we saw, I mean, we have the data about the utilization of parking. So we're very confident about how much money will be generated from paid parking. And that's, that's why we base that part of the recommendation. But again, council can vary that and say, you know, that might be true, that we could earn that much. But in our judgment as council, we don't need to earn that much because of these other considerations. But I think the big point there is the recommendation contains a number of variables that council can change. Administration is happy to take whatever direction you give us, and we'll go away and work on it. But we do need a direction, even if it isn't perfectly in alignment with the administrative recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Mayor Ireland?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall, consistent with what we've just heard from Mr. Given. I I am in a position to make some motions or one motion with several parts. And I might for expediency do it that way, but I invite anyone to call for division if they wish, following the bullet points that are in the recommendation. I skipped the first one. I will leave that to anybody else if they want to make a motion in that regard. But I think work remains to be done with respect to the motif guidelines. Starting with the second bullet, I would move that where are we? I guess we are committee recommending to council that applications which are consistent with Parks Canada's architectural design and motif guidelines be given multi-year approvals for up to three, pardon me, three years. And that legacy installations that are not consistent with Parks Canada's architectural design and motif guidelines be granted approval for the twenty twenty-two operating season. That the number of seats in a sidewalk seating area may not exceed sixty percent of the seats available within the main business premises. And although I haven't heard anything about what is not streamlined, if we can streamline the process, then I'm all for that. So I would include the final bullet that the process to renew existing applications where no change to the previously approved configuration is proposed be streamlined. And finally, direction that we work with Parks Canada to ensure that there is an avenue of appeal for any applicant who is denied as a result of the application of the Parks Canada architectural design and motif guidelines. You will note that I haven't addressed the fees yet. I would like to get through whether or not we're going to approve some form of sidewalk seating for twenty twenty-two to give some certainty. And I'm prepared as a separate motion to make a motion with respect to fees, but I don't want it part of the main motion.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. Counselor Demora?
If that's a motion, I still have a couple of points that I need clarifying before I speak on that motion. If I may. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. To administration, Mr. Given, I just for, just so I'm clear on what I'm voting on, the sixty percent of the seats available within the main business premise, that number, how is that devised?
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Hall, for Counselor Demora. It is a bit arbitrary. In that administration identified that there were some cases last year where there were businesses that had a number of seats, the number of seats outdoors exceeded the number of seats, you know, that were possible indoors. And looking at it, we do see this as an accessory use that is, you know, is second to the main operation of the business. It is, it is not the business, it is an addition to the business. And so on that basis, we thought that it was reasonable to provide a recommendation to council to find some way to ensure that patios remain a addition rather than the primary business. Again, that's a variable. If council said it should only be forty percent of the seats available, you know, or it should be ninety percent of the seats available, that it certainly is up to you. But administration looked at the issue and is recommending the council in terms of the balance of the use of public space and how much is available for parking for other adjacent businesses, that it is reasonable that a business should not, you know, exceed the number, exceed the number of seats that are available within their primary place of operation. What that percentage is, again, is a variable that council can determine.
And then just another point of clarification in the recommendations for this, and I know it wasn't addressed in the motion, but just to be clear on what I'm going to be basing my vote on, again, through you, Counselor or Deputy Mayor Hall to Mr. Given, with the intention of returning to the pre-two thousand twenty sidewalk seating program guidelines, where sidewalk seating was approved on public land and only where sufficient space, two meters remained. Can businesses still just do that if they wanted to, if they fall into the requirements? They fall back to like not wanting to do the street parking?
I believe that they can. I don't, I don't believe that we've changed that ability in the, in the bylaw. So if somebody wanted to fall under that and put a couple of, you know, a table or a couple of tables sort of on the sidewalk. And if there is enough public circulation space still available, then that would be possible for them. Yes. But I think that, you know, for many businesses, that would be a very small installation, sort of, you know, but I believe that that, yes, that would continue to be possible.
Okay, thank you. And I really appreciate that. I apologize to council for delaying the conversation on the motion. I just wanted to be clear on what we were actually deciding today or making recommendations for.
Thank you, Counselor Demora. Any other debate on this motion? Or I'm wondering if, I also want to speak to the sixty percent allowance compared to your indoor seating. Were there complaints from people that it was too much outside? I'm wondering why that would be something the municipality or parks would control? Wouldn't that be like a fire chief or like, again, I know a lot of these businesses, this was their lifeline this summer, and some businesses are quite small inside and had the equivalent outside. I don't know if that would be, I'm not sure what other councillors think, but I don't know if that's something I would, I might want to pull that out of the motion and vote on that separately.
So just to be clear, this was not a recommendation from parks. This is a municipal administration recommendation. And it really is related to what are the limits that council is willing to establish? Should a business be able to have double the number of seats outside than they have inside? You know, council could set this, this number at one hundred and twenty percent or two hundred percent. Again, that's up to council to decide what makes sense. And how much of that public area are you willing to commit to private use? And what price are you willing to do that at? Complex, you know, but there's a number of factors that come together there, certainly complex for council to decide because there are competing issues. And if sixty percent isn't the number, either, you know, you could vote on that separately or in terms of process, you know, somebody can amend if sixty percent isn't the exact right number that would have support among council.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Ms. Adon?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. In addition to your question, I would like to point out that the size of the patios can also have some impacts on, well, other items that would be dealt with through the permit process probably, but emergency access is one of them. So if a part of the block is completely covered in patios, how do our first responders get to the establishments that are on that street? It is an item that we would look at before we approve any permit. And on a temporary basis in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, we didn't necessarily look at all of our requirements. So you can, you can think of Alberta Health Services requirements for the number of washrooms for how many patrons are in the restaurant, for example, or fire limit capacities. I mean, we're talking about outside space here, it's not inside, but there may be other code items or safety items that could be triggered by a very large patio, which in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one was a temporary project. We sort of went with it, but that's something we would look at a bit more closely for a permanent program, which depending where council goes with this, it may not be permanent for twenty twenty-two again. So just some other considerations to keep in mind.
Thank you, Ms. Adon. Counselor Demora, sign your hand up?
Yeah, I know we're still Yeah, I know we're still working on some clarifications and not really debating the motion. So when we're ready to debate, I don't want to put one in front of the other, but I I I have some issues with supporting the motion as it is. I don't have any more points of for clarity. So if other councillors do, I'm ready to speak to whether I'm going to be in favor or not.
Thank you, Counselor Demora. Any other councillors? Mayor Ireland.
Thank you Deputy Hall. And although I hesitate to speak in this way about a motion that I presented. Two things have occurred to me in the discussion. Firstly, I I did reference that we are committed to the whole, and so I was going to change it to say that we recommend to council, but it is different in that it is a direction to administration. So rather than simply make a motion that goes over another week to to council, if I might be allowed to to reword the opening that count that committee direct administration in the in the way that I have outlined. But I also note to councillor Demora's point. There was, I I thought a desire to move this forward and get us into debate among council, but in doing so, I have, I think sidelined representation that is available. And as part of the report, I note that the Jasper Park Chamber of Commerce is on the agenda and have not been any part of the information provided yet to council. So given that they are here and they have favored us with a report and have done research, I am prepared to defer debate and hear from that element of our community before council is put in a position where it's going to make a vote on issues without having heard from one of the parties who has done some substantial work on that. So again, my apologies for having perhaps rushed it a bit. I'm prepared to defer the debate and the vote until at least we hear from the Chamber of Commerce if they wish to add.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. Ms. Pavlov, I see that you're here. Did you want to add anything to our our conversation?
Apparently, the host has is not allowing me to use video. Thank you. Yeah, I'm glad to have the opportunity. Thank you, Mayor Ireland, for inviting us to have a word in this process. As you know, a report was submitted to you. It has been the third in the series of patio retail expansion seating reports. So we endeavor to contact over one hundred and thirty businesses individually by phone and talk about what businesses want and need. And we further submitted a letter that gives our basic recommendations based on that. Everything you have said is exactly what we would like to see in the recommendation phase. Definitely multi-year approval. The ninety percent of the individuals that we spoke to want to see a three to five year approval. So it would be seasonal, but yes, a three to five year. And phasing out the Jersey barriers would definitely be appreciated. Minimum one year, but more more properly, two years. Again, let's look at the financial impact. People are still trying to recover and there are questions about some of the motif that have been suggested by Parks Canada. So it's it's worthy of further discussion, but I think for now, let's keep them the way they are and work around them accordingly for safety purposes as well. Review the structure as part of an overall plan for operators and with operators. That's the key here is to be in direct communication. And we are happy and more than willing to facilitate conversations, town halls regarding patios, whatever it takes to make sure that we have got all of the input of the business community involved in this. And it's not just those operating patios, it's the businesses that surround them. And so I will, you know, reiterate that when we reached out to all of the businesses between the four hundred and six hundred blocks of Patricia and Tnot, we reached out to all. Sectors were not an issue for us. So we've spoken to everybody from nonprofits to service to restaurants to retail. Yeah, so we we definitely did our homework in that regard. We'd like to look at talking more with Parks Canada. And it's been debated already today. There are a number of different ways we could go with it. There are some questions regarding the overall motif that is being considered by Parks Canada, and there are questions that arise. One of the costs involved with changing the motifs is not just the disposal of Jersey barriers, but the construction. And we know that there are still a lot of challenges out there to do a construction project of this nature. One of the thoughts that came up to us as we were going over the the data was that perhaps, I mean, the chamber could work in concert with municipality and parks and put out an RFP to look at potentially one contractor doing all this work, who then would be able to reduce the cost based on the number of patios could also ensure the uniformity of the motif, however that lands up looking in the end. And it would also make things more efficient when it comes to making sure the integrity of the patios themselves is there. So for safety reasons, obviously, so you have one contractor to be dealing with as opposed to ten or fifteen based on the number of patios. Review the use of tents. I know there are a number of individuals who have a number of tents on their patios. And some of the suggestions have been to remove tents and go with umbrellas. The findings that we are having in our discussions is that people would rather be sitting under a tent at any given point. They don't necessarily trust the flight path of an umbrella during some of those quick windstorms that we have. And so is there a sweet spot that could be determined to have patios have more than one tent, but still meet what is considered to be park guidelines? Again, looking at the ten by ten versus ten by tens that are connected to each other. That's making much bigger spaces and requiring permits. So we're looking at, you know, how we can work with parks and with operators so that they have proper covering for the wind and the rain. There was some discussion about retail merchandisers. They are not taking advantage of this in any way, shape or form for a number of reasons, one mostly being concerned about the damage that could occur to their merchandise through rain, through wind, dust, all of those things. So, pardon me, that could be consideration as to whether or not the naming of this project even remains as it is. And then the other thing is too, that there were a lot of comments from from many operators and businesses who had patios established in their immediate area that were never used. So there there needs to be maybe a tweaking of the policy. You know, some sort of projected use. A conversation more than anything, let's see how we can make sure that the patios that are established are in fact going to be operational and not taking up a parking space at a very low cost, depending on how that rolls.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pavlov, and I apologize also for not inviting you to speak directly as the chair. I should have been paying attention. Counselor Demora.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you Deputy Mayor. I'm hoping those giggles after you address my name aren't addressed at being and hopefully just at the the situation we're in. Ms. Pavlov, thank you very much for the information that you given that you've given. I appreciate that you're able to speak. Having represented businesses in in both food and beverage and in retail. You know, I'm just wondering, Mr. Given had brought up a point, you know, like, what are the parking stalls that are being used by restaurateurs? I think that what like, what's the value to a retail that's not partaking in that in the in the use of that? Have people made any reference to that?
Yes, there was a few comments by some retailers who were in the initial stages of 2020 when pandemic hit and the whole concept of patio extend patio seating. They were against it and they were very, very clear about that. But I could tell you at the end of the 2020 season, when I did another follow up to see what their thoughts were, those that had been naysayers in fact completely changed their minds. They felt that there was a great number of spin off opportunities that came from that because of people waiting for a table. So they would, you know, go into different businesses. And then some restaurants set up systems too, where you got to text your tables ready in ten. So they were able to get themselves back to wherever they were reserved in. And very often it was like, you know, one party of the two might be still enjoying a beverage. So the other party went and checked out some of the retail stores. They were all actually very pleasantly surprised. There was nobody who was negative about that.
Well, I appreciate that. And and that helps me with, you know, helping me base my decisions because, you know, there is a value to the community for those parking stalls. I understand that. And there's also a value to you know, businesses. So if there's a benefit, you know, I, you know, it helps me decide on, you know, how I would like recommend putting a value to the to those stalls being used. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Demora. Any other questions for Ms. Pavlov? I see no hands. Mayor Ireland, did you want to remake your recommendation?
Sure, I'm I'm happy to do that. Deputy Mayor Hall, and I will excise from this one, the the number of seats limited to sixty percent is you had indicated that you would prefer to deal with that as a as a separate issue and I in fact invited that for for all of them. So I'm happy to acknowledge that. So the motion that I have put forward is this, that committee direct administration to bring back changes to the sidewalk seating and retail area extension program as follows. And if I can, just to address Ms. Pavlov's comment about changing the name, just because other retail has not yet used it. I think it is still an option. If somebody wants to sell ice cream from the sidewalk without a single seat around, that's retail business. And to me, that would be permissible. So just an aside. Anyway, bring back changes to the sidewalk seating and retail area extension program as follows. One, that applications that are consistent with Parks Canada's architectural design and motif guidelines be given multi-year approvals for up to three years. Two, that legacy installations that are not consistent with Parks Canada's architectural design and motif guidelines be granted approval for the 2022 operating season. That the process to renew existing applications where no change to the previously approved configuration is proposed be streamlined. And finally, that we direct administration to work with Parks Canada to ensure an avenue of appeal for any applicant who is denied as a result of the application of the Parks Canada architectural design and motif guidelines.
Thank you for your motion, Mayor Ireland. I will open the floor to debate. Counselor Melnick.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Hall. I appreciate his worship's recommendations to administration, and I am in favor of of all of the recommendations that the mayor has indicated. We do hope we'll come back to taking a look at the seating. But I think that will help us move forward and will probably give us an opportunity to develop this program over a period of a couple of years as opposed to a one year quick turnaround, which may or may not fully recognize the the recommendations, the motif and design recommendations and the implications that might have down the road. I certainly think this is a good way to move forward, given that we're still in a COVID year without real certainty as to what the summer will look like. So I look this as a, I look at this as a a positive step forward with the opportunity to do a phase in over a couple of years to have a more permanent program at that point.
Thank you, Counselor Melnick. Any other councillors which to speak to the motion? Counselor Demora.
I would like to speak in favor of the motion on a on a few items for sure, but you know, I'm still not clear on the Parks Canada guidelines and and what is considered a guideline or what's actually considered, you know, a rule of thumb and and those have changed a little bit over time. And I I'm I'm a little bit inflexible in the process that in my mind that I I I don't understand why we can't use umbrellas and why they're not safe. And and to me, or sorry, the the tents, because it's to me, they seem a lot safer and they provide a better use for the areas until we are like of a clear understanding of what is able, what we're able to use, what we're not able to use. I can't, I can't support a motion that that holds that because I can't ask to go forward on something that's not clear. Sorry for the the confusing comments. I just, I'm trying to wrap my head around this.
Thank you, Counselor Demora. Anybody else like to speak to the motion? I don't see any hands. I too would be in favor of this motion as I as I interpreted or I interpret the parks part of things is it's, it'll be the same for this year. They're going to allow the tents and barriers for this season. And we look, we look for the next few years to make an actual solid plan. If any other councillors wishing to speak to this motion? I see no hands, so I will call the question. All in favor? And opposed? That is one opposed, so that motion carries. So moving on to, maybe we should tackle the seating allowances outside. Does anybody want to speak to to that part of recommendations? Counselor Demora?
Thank you. I would like to see something based on something, whether it's safety or whatever it is. Indoor seating is based on certain reasoning, health and safety codes. And if it's just an arbitrary number, it doesn't make any sense to have any ruling or decision making over that process. If business has the ability to to do its to within Alberta guideline restrictions when it comes to COVID, social distancing and all that. And and if the the fire chief gives a thumbs up on on the amount of seats there, then that should be what is usable space in my mind.
Thank you, Counselor Demora. I also agree. I think that the restaurants already have processes in place that allow that that set out how many seats they're allowed to have based on the size of the restaurant and the restaurants. That would be a health inspector. I think we already have those those guidelines. Counselor Keller-Herempe, I saw your hand up.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Hall. I just want to clarify. So the restaurants, so we say they have ten seats outside. Don't they have to be ten seats empty on the inside should we get rain? So people who go in and they're within their fire code? So they already have that restriction in place to my knowledge. So therefore, I agree like, I don't think we should restrict them for the amount of seats outside.
Thank you, Counselor Keller-Herempe. Working in a restaurant with a patio, I can speak to that a little bit. If you sit outside in a night where it might rain and there's no umbrellas, it's a bit of a risk you take, which kind of brings us back to the pop up tents and at this point, moving forward, I think, even regarding, in my opinion, Jersey barriers and pop up tents, if they are what is going to allow these businesses to stay in business. I'm all for them until we can, until we have a chance to recover. I'm all for them until we can, until we have a chance to recover. Anybody else want to speak to the seating restrictions? Councillor Wexler?
I too uh agree that I think fire should provide limits enough to uh cover and to cover concerns. And I guess my thought too is that depending on the size of the I think that that limit may have differing um the sixty percent uh limit might have differing uh effects on different sized businesses. And and so I think it may not be a um, it may not be a one-size-fits-all kind of po- possibility.
Thank you, councillor Wexler. Any other um thoughts and councillors on this subject? Uh Mayor Ireland?
Initially, um this had been part of my original motion and it has been segregated from that. I think it's still a motion um and I have yet to speak to it. I think in fact, and I I don't have um the numbers in front of me. But my understanding is similar to um what councillor Keller Herempe expressed earlier, that I think that there are some limits now, and I think that um that limit is fifty percent. And sixty percent in fact gives our operators a slightly better chance. Um and so a people are are concerned about what um options might be available for the hospitality and restaurant industry here. I think if we've, and maybe we are stuck with the fifty percent in any event, um because of of fire code and other regulations. And so if it can't exceed fifty, maybe, or pardon me, sixty, maybe it can't even get there. But at least it is a nod in the right direction. So um if councillors want to vote against it on the basis that potentially it could be a hundred percent, um you know, fly at it. I I think there are other factors that will influence the outcome in any event, and I I don't know what those are. But I think I am prepared to say if it's a ten percent increase, um and you can find a way to make it happen, um I'm fine with that. Maybe it comes to to nothing. I see uh Mister Given wants to speak on that and I I welcome um any additional information because I am flying a bit blind on this and it's it's pretty general understanding that I have of of how the operation works currently.
Yes, thanks Deputy Mayor Hall and and thanks Mayor Ireland uh for that willingness, uh because this isn't contained in as much detail in the report and Miss Nedon may be able to add uh additional uh info from uh Mister Jones, who, you know, had detailed sort of statistics on each installation. But I uh from memory, I can confirm that there were uh installations this past season that had more seats outside than they had inside. And so there is not a, some other requirement or limitation imposed by some entity. Uh you know, uh either health inspector or fire that provided a limitation on that. So um that, uh you know, it missed it on. If Christine, if you have any additional info, um yeah, please do share, but my understanding is that there is no other limitation. So I mean theoretically, if somebody wanted to buy up the whole street because they could afford to and they saw that there was a good business case to do it and their adjacent neighbors thought it was okay. Everything that I've seen suggests that that's that's possible and there's no other sort of limitation other than the ones that we may impose, the council may impose on how much of the public space you want to dedicate to any single business.
Thank you, Mister Given. Any other comments or uh councillor Demora?
If there are one or two places that might have exceeded, and I can't see where, um but you know, if 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 admit, I trust administration, if they say that that's happening, that's fine, but I think the health inspector and and um whatever codes that we had, I'd like to base my decision on real facts and not arbitrary numbers. So regardless if it's a ten percent increase or whatever it is, um different uh applications are going to be attributed to different uh premises. So I think that we should leave it up to the powers that be that have regulation and control over that and stay out of people's bedrooms, because this is not our jurisdiction. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Demora. Any other comments from council? I, uh councillor Melnick?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. I think the the guiding factor here is the fire life safety, number one. Regarding the um the amount of outside seating over and above what's inside. And I think number two is uh restrictions that may be imposed due to liquor licensing, um as to the number of stalls you need for the number of seats you have. And the third thing uh would be the health inspector's uh um opinion on a same type of issue, washroom space versus seating space. Um there are guidelines and provincial regulations on on those, and I think those should be the uh guiding principles as to um how we go forward with the amount of outside seating.
Thank you, councillor Melnick. Um Miss Nedon?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. I'm a a bit hesitant to jump into that conversation, but uh only to add that twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one were pilot projects. And how things were handled, whether that's the way to move forward or not, and how compliant that is with existing regulations is a is a good question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Don. I think to touch back on councillor Wexler's point about uh different sized restaurants and if it's a small cafe that has ten seats inside and they rent the same amount of space as a restaurant that has fifty seats inside. You know, doubling or or exceeding their inside capacity would be a very easy thing to do, but I also support it because I want these businesses to survive. And I would support a motion that just put it in the hands of our health inspectors and our our fire chiefs. These restaurants have been able to get these seats already through their processes. I don't think we need to maybe be involved in in this one. Any other comments or questions from council or do I have anybody willing to make a motion? I feel like maybe Mayor Ireland had a motion on the table or or was talking about making it.
I I believe that there was an earlier motion and then it went to um division and so it it languishes all on its own. Um I may have been persuaded to vote against my own motion by now anyway, and if there is no one else interested um in the absence of objection from council, I'm prepared to withdraw the motion and it just we're just done with that subject, I think, if that's the case.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. Is that the case? I I feel like that might be the case. Excellent. Okay, so moving on, I think the last thing to address in the sidewalk seating retail expansion program is our cost, the cost. Does anybody want to speak to to that part of this program? I see no hands. By, oh, make, uh councillor Wexler?
I I have some degree of feeling conflicted on this because I I agree uh that in many ways, the uh the per stall basis it uh makes some sense and it does give flexibility for um si- situations that are not the same, you know, not necessarily re- seating required, but uh that I don't feel comfortable with the massive increase um in in the year twenty twenty-two, so um I'm just expressing my con- conflicted feelings on that.
Thank you, councillor Wexler. Councillor Keller Herempe?
I also don't believe that we should do a huge increase um going forward in twenty twenty-two. Because of COVID, we are in the third year. Nobody knows what's going to come. Um however, um going forward at our goal, I think a slight increase of ten percent this year, knowing that within three to five years, we get to where we want to be. And you know, everything goes up slightly. So I could be in sort of a ten percent increase to the current price. And um you know, nobody expects anything for free. Everything goes up a little bit and um I think we start moving in the right direction.
Thank you, councillor Keller Herempe. Uh councillor Demora?
Again, um you know, I really appreciate the work that administrations put behind this report. I know that it's taken a lot of time and and I'm glad we have some numbers to review here. Um and I'm not questioning why they have a hundred and eighty-four date there. I completely understand it and it makes sense from their point of view and and that's for us to debate. I think that we should consider other things. Uh especially the fact that taxes did go up, our utility rates did go up, and that's all going to get uh trickled down to the operator. So um you know, I'm, I would be more in favor to keeping things balanced to to what they were in the past. Having heard from um Ms. Pavlov uh and the chamber and and having discussions with other business owners, I'm not a hundred percent convinced that, you know, it's it it's um across the board when it comes down to the total sentiment of the value. But uh if there is a described um acceptance and value to um, you know, other businesses outside of the restaurants that that uh find it helpful to their business, then you know, I'm I'm in favor of keeping the the cost down and not increasing right now uh until we get further information. So that's kind of where I'm, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Demora. Any other councillors wish to speak? Uh councillor Melnick?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. I I would like to um reconfirm with councillor Keller Herempe uh her suggestion of a ten percent increase of the base application fee plus the twenty-five dollars per seat. That's um what uh is not necessarily a motion right now, but is a discussion point. The work that's been done on the parking stall value um gives us a basis that's not arbitrary. It's actually uh based in some sort of um rationale. Um and the ten percent, however, the twenty-five dollar per seat was was established a number of years ago, uh probably had a certain rationale as well. If we were to take a look at this from a a the rationale of the parking stall value of sixteen hundred and fifty dollars per stall. But only phased in this year at fifty percent of that, that would put the parking stall at eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. Um it would achieve a few things. It would increase um uh revenue and perhaps recognize that we may be undercharged for what the value of that stall was in the past. But it would also give an opportunity to um allow businesses to come through this year, knowing that um the rationale was based on what the value of a parking stall is. Um and I I would just like to put that out for discussion among council, perhaps before we get to a recommendation, um that that may be the way to move forward for this year. Um uh as a second option to the ten percent increase from from previous year.
Thank you, councillor Melnick. Any other questions, comments from council? I too am slightly concerned and conflicted um about raising, raising these these fees a a whole bunch. I know that, again, we're just at the beginning of recovering. We don't even know what's going to happen this summer. So much relies on our borders. And I I spoke with a lot of people over the weekend and did a bunch of reading and research and the spending ratio between domestic travelers and international travelers is one to six. So we might be busier and busy in town because things will be opened domestically, but it it really depends on what happens with our borders and mandates and I'm just nervous about just looking at this chart we have in the agenda that would put the average patio two stalls that would that would double their double what they're paying for the season. Again, for some businesses, you have to think that one small cafe will have two stalls, one big restaurant might have two stalls. So it's very different. It it's hard, it's hard to compare all businesses in town. I I I think I would agree with a percent of increase of what they paid last year, not not based on the 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 um what the stall is worth, although I do recognize that we have now, you know, we now know what those stalls are worth. Um back to councillor Wexler's earlier comment about, you know, instead of putting this onto our our local restaurants and businesses, could we revisit opening up parking to your round and and get the money from the people that are coming here? We're already going to be talking about an exemption program today. Um yeah, those are just my thoughts. I I know we can agree on something, but I'm just concerned about raising it too much, when we're still really uncertain with what's going to happen this summer. Councillor Demora?
Well, I think if we're going to raise it any amount, it should probably be a realm of twelve point nine percent. I'm just saying. That's that's been a number that's been used in the past. But I I do want to say that uh the reason, part of the reasoning why I was in favor of uh the three dollars per hour on um on the street in the downtown core was because of the reduced availability due to uh sidewalk seating. So um there's an increased uh demand on those stalls and more pressure. So uh you know, I wanted to promote uh more flow uh in my mind. So I thought that, you know, the the three dollars was to help compensate for a lot of that space that isn't being used. So that's part of the reasoning of having the visitor pay for that space being used by other um businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Demora. Anybody else wish to speak to this? Or potentially make a recommendation? Uh Mayor Ireland?
I hesitate to uh to make the motion, um but I want to make some observations. I firstly, I think this is absolutely the right way to go to fix the the fee based on the value of the parking stall, which which we now know. Um I think saying twenty-five percent of the value of a stall as calculated by administration is in fact quite generous. And yes, it's more than it was before. But that's because it was way too cheap before. We started this off without knowing really what the value was. So to talk about percentage increases is is unfair. It might have been free and we still have to add something. We're not doing this with respect to other municipal assets. Look at the increases we've had in utility fees. Things are not free. This is a public asset which people are going to use to generate profit. Nine dollars per stall per day is not userless. How much does a single seat generate in revenue? Of I, accepting that it's not occupied twelve hours a day, every single day. Um the return on this can be monumental. Would the business community be happier if we charged instead a percent of gross profits? Um you know, there there are businesses that have suffered. There are businesses who have survived because of sidewalk seating and they they appreciate the value. I am inclined a bit to councillor um Melnick's suggestion. I think that maybe an approach would be to recognize that the fee ought to be twenty-five percent of the value of the stall, but phased in over two years, fifty percent this year, hundred percent in subsequent years, because we are looking, um I hope at the long-term approval of patio seating, that this is really going beyond a pilot project and and we're committed to this. And so let the business And so let the business sector know where we're going. And if we settled on twenty five percent of the value of a parking stall, but only charge half of that for the first year, recognizing that in two zero twenty three, it goes up to to the next amount. I could certainly accommodate that in in my thought processes. But if we don't charge, we will see a repetition of which of the the issue that Ms Pavlov raised, which is patio seating that is unused. People put it out there. They take away the parking because they haven't had to pay for it. So it's lost to everybody. It's lost to every business that feels they need parking closer to their establishment. And it sits unused. And that's because we have undervalued it. And if we want to prevent that wasteful use, then I think we have to charge more for it.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. Anybody else with councillor Demota?
Thank you. And you know what? All of those comments are valid and I appreciate them. But, you know, it's it's really hard. Like, if you're a representative of somebody or a company that provides alcohol as opposed to like coffee and, you know, lunch in some spaces, it's a whole different ballgame. If you're allowed to do both, that's great. But, you know, if you're known more for for, you know, your volume in alcohol, your margins are a lot different than other businesses. So, you know, to to base conversation on, you know, those that are the most industrious and are able to do it, like, that's great. But I I think a blanket rule that's of this consequence might put others out of business or or really force them onto the curve. And pardon the pun there, I didn't even mean to do that. But it's just, I I think we, there are greater things to consider. And we've got some numbers in front of us. Thankfully, we don't have to make a decision today. I I like the fact that we're moving forward in a certain direction. I think there is a value to the to the lots. But I think considering, again, with the increases that have already happened, you know, the twelve point nine percent in taxes, and then, again, the utility rates, super high. So I think a triple increase, like getting bombarded from from many directions could be hard on and and maybe unsustainable for some. So I can't support what's proposed in front of us. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Demota. Mayor Ireland, can you can you just recap what you had said? Was it half of twenty five percent the first year, kind of with a graduated increase over time?
I can, yes. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. I was I was simply trying to channel councillor Melnick. I I thought that I interpreted his comment to be that and I was just supportive of that. So I I think he said fifty percent this year and and moved to twenty five percent of the value in in the subsequent year. And that that is a resolution which I could support. But if with councillor Melnick's proposal and if he wants to make a motion, I think.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. Councillor Melnick?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. I think to to formalize this, I will make that recommendation to administration that the proposed two zero twenty two fee for parking stalls be based on fifty percent of the calculated value of sixteen fifty for two zero twenty two. And that council will revisit this for two zero twenty three with the assumption that we'll be moving towards the calculated value of sixteen fifty per stall for that year. And if I could just quickly speak to this. This conversation is also talked about phasing in and phasing out, phasing in new motifs, phasing out jersey barriers, working with parks and administration to come to a program that will be over time aesthetically pleasing, beneficial to operators, safe in the community. And it's going to take some work. Certainly, the phased in approach that I think we're taking will help operators plan, not just for this year, but will help operators plan for next year, whether sidewalk seating is part of their business plan. As was noted, some some sidewalk seating was not used. And potentially, those businesses may realize that it's just not part of the business mix for them. And that is an individual decision by businesses. Hopefully, by two zero twenty three, we see our international travel return. But I think we need to move forward, recognizing that 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 stall has a value. And and this timing and and the proposed rate will give operators an opportunity to consider whether they should be using sidewalk seating this summer based on everything we've talked about. So certainly look forward to additional debate.
Thank you, councillor Melnick. I will open the floor to debate. Oh, is there a point of order? Councillor Demota?
Point of clarification. So just to be clear on what's on the table right now, we're talking about fifty percent of the proposed sixteen fifty, which is actually twelve point five percent on the six on the value. So it's twelve point five percent on the actual value. Because it's the proposed is twenty five percent of the potential paid parking revenue. And councillor Melnick is proposing half of that. So half of that would be twelve point five, which would be in equivalence to just under eight hundred and thirty dollars, a little bit higher than it was last year. That's why I just want to clarify.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I I just just to assist councillor, because it is, we're sort of on a percentage of a percentage of a percentage. And I appreciate the intent here. And I wonder if it might be might be better for council to set the rate for a parking stall. And it sounds like, you know, eight hundred and twenty five is approximately where councillor Melnick's motion is intended to land us eight hundred and twenty five dollars per parking stall. I think that was that's sort of what the math would work out to. But as councillor Demota noted, the way it was phrased sort of led to a, you know, administration's recommendation of sixteen fifty was actually only twenty five percent of the total revenue that could be earned, which was six thousand six hundred. So we're sort of at a percent of a percent of a percent. Potentially easier for council, the public and administration, if council says, we know these numbers now. We know that it could earn six thousand dollars. But we've chosen to value the use of that stall for our Jasper local businesses at eight hundred and twenty five dollars this year. You know, that is that is rather than sort of a, and with the intention, I think, you know, as councillor Melnick said, of reexamining that fee next year to see if that fee is still reasonable. Yeah, I just offer that as a suggestion, rather than everybody having to try and calculate the percentages and how they apply on top of everything else. It just, I think, gets to the same place that councillor Melnick was headed, maybe in a little bit more of a direct way. So it's, we don't lose anything in translation.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Councillor Keller-Herempe, I think I saw your hand up.
I just want to say I could support that motion. It's a slight increase. It's not huge and we're going in the right direction.
Thank you, councillor Keller-Herempe. Councillor Demota? And can thank councillor Waxer.
I can support that. It makes more sense, you know, if if we're matching it up with our our tax increase this year. It it it's closer to that number. And we're going to have better numbers at the end of this season of street parking. And I think that, you know, we'll get a a different value. We might get a different value on on those stalls. So based on not having that exact information, you know, we we can project on what we did last year. But from May one to October thirty first with the three dollars, you know, there there's different variables in the mix. So I think we'll have, again, better numbers and we can suit our decision next year based on on what we've observed in two zero twenty two. So I can support eight twenty five. Makes more sense. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Demota. Councillor Waxer?
My question is, if we're if we're doing that, just looking at the the information, does that double the the fee? Because it looks like last year for two stalls, people were paying eight hundred. And now we're seeing about eight fifty for per stall. So I'm I'm wondering if if, in fact, we're doubling.
Thank you, councillor Waxer. Mr. Given?
I can speak to that a little bit. Administration has had to do some guestimating, if I can. Not every, you know, business configured their use of the space in exactly the same way. The two zero twenty one pricing was based on the number of seats. And so that's a bit of a challenge. Some business might use a bigger table and get less seats. Somebody might have small tables and squeeze in a whole bunch of seats. And that was a a bit of the challenge. So what you see in the table is the approximate average. So the average patio consumed two stalls and would have paid approximately eight hundred dollars. But there was certainly variability within that. And I'm sure that there was some business strategy with businesses trying to figure out how many, you know, how how they could squeeze the, you know, most number of seats in a small space. So councillor Waxer, you are correct that the average installation last year consumed two stalls at a cost of eight hundred dollars. The the current phrasing of the direction from council is to set the cost of a single stall at eight hundred dollars. And then, so if somebody wanted to use use up two stalls, then it would be sixteen hundred dollars. Sorry, sixteen fifty, based on sort of the direction it was going.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Is that a pen? Councillor Demota?
Yeah, again, so there are some establishments that do have both. They've got sidewalk seating and then they've got street seating. So patio on the sidewalk and patio in the parking stall. So we're basing this on a fixed cost and not a per seat cost. But the one, the the areas that are being used on the sidewalk, are are we still? Like, are they going to be two different things? Or are there still going to be per seat charges for the parking stalls on the street? That's where I need some clarification because it's a bit vague right now. Unless it's cleared to everybody else.
So so just Deputy Mayor Hall, so administration's recommendation would be to move forward to valuing the space of a stall, period. Appreciating that in the odd circumstance, or maybe somebody who chooses to pop a couple of seats out on the sidewalk and and not do the whole big patio walk around, take up parking stall, that would be a different case and we would deal. And that would be a smaller number, you know, rather than the large installations that we're really talking about that are really the driver of this conversation. So we appreciate that there will potentially be some one offs. We can certainly deal with one offs if they're smaller in in nature. What we really are recommending is that this be applied for the use of the public space in the parking lane that may be used for a walk around or may be used to have people sitting. But in either case, the parking lane is being used.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Any other questions or comments from council? I see no hands. I I too can support this motion with a little bit hesitation on the couple one offs that I I think will be affected. But if we can, if the opportunity to relook at those after this project this year is finished, I I'm okay with that. Any other debate for councillor Demota?
I don't think it's a one off. In my head, just going down the main street, I can think of four places and they are the larger places. But, yeah, a lot of areas are allowed to provide both. So they're, you're on it now. I I believe that the sidewalk seating is going to continue per seat. And then you pay for your parking stalls on the street. So if that's the case, and and you know what? There has been an ability to peel. And in the past, I've heard from businesses that bylaw worked really hard to make to help everybody be successful, for the most part. I heard positive things come back on on the work there. So I have a lot of confidence in this rolling out. I I understand that this is doubling now, like in when I see it. And I'm glad that councillor Waxer brought that up. At the same time, you know, there are places that that had the space available and didn't use it. So, you know, to really entice the use, proper use and and maximize the use for our community, I I think that I I can support this motion as is. It it will be tough for some still, but it's better than what the initial proposal is. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Demota. Councillor Keller-Herempe?
In past years, people, if businesses couldn't afford to pay upfront, and they could pay at the end of the season or throughout the season with our penalties. And my true deputy mayor to administration, I would presume that we would allow that again in two zero twenty two.
I would actually have to defer to Mr. Don just with respect to how we collected payments. I know that we provided, you know, administration always looks to work with businesses to make sure that we have some flexibility. I don't know if there were any issues around that in this past season. But we would continue, you know, once council sets the rules, we will look to implement them fairly and equally, but also with some flexibility, appreciating that there's different circumstances. Christine, I don't know if you had anything in terms of how payments were accepted last time around.
Thank you, Mr. Given. I can confirm that payment for sidewalk seating in two zero twenty one was received anytime between April and September. So so some businesses wouldn't have proceeded with the permit fee until the end of the season.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Don. Any other debate from council? Mayor Ireland?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. I'm just uncertain of the precise question that you may call. And it seems to me now that the motion may be understood to simply charge a fee of eight hundred and twenty five dollars this year. And although I can support that result, it is not the nature of the motion that I thought we were looking at. I I am persuaded that administration has provided us with an excellent recommendation. Twenty five percent of the paid parking revenue as as a fee to take a parking stall out of service for commercial purposes seems to me to be fair, but recognizing the circumstances that we're in. I am inclined to say that's a fair fee, but for two zero twenty two, we will only charge half of that amount. And that is qualitatively different than saying the fee is eight hundred and twenty five dollars. And then next year, when we look at this again, we will be back in the position of being accused of doubling the fee once again. I think we should set a fair fee and then apply a discount rather than saying this is the fee. So it's a it's a nuance, but I I need to hear, I think, from councillor Melnick, because it was his motion, just what is the nature of the motion that we're voting on?
Councillor Melnick?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. That is, his worship does have a precise. We did establish what a fair value of a commercially converted stall would be at sixteen hundred and fifty per year, per stall. And the discount to fifty percent for this year is intended to help transition through us coming out of COVID, with the intent that next year, that cost per stall that is established at twenty five percent of the potential value of sixteen fifty would be the two zero twenty three cost.
Thank you, councillor Melnick.
I hope that clarifies things for council and administration. And hopefully for the businesses who will be looking at the fee, knowing that this is a discounted fee for this year with next year going to the proposed, what would be the proposed two zero twenty three fee.
Thank you, councillor Melnick. Councillor Demota?
I really like that approach. It's eking out of pandemic if we actually get out of this thing. And, you know, I I think a staged approach is good. So and you know what? We might have different numbers next year again. So I, you know, we don't, whatever is discussed here. Um, and you know what? We might have different numbers next year again, so I, you know, we don't, whatever is discussed here today written in stone for twenty twenty three, so um, keep that in mind.
Thank you, Council Demota. Uh, any other debate or comments? Council Melnick, do, do you want to reword your motion for administration?
For clarity, um, uh, my motion would be to um, propose the twelve, the, the, for twenty twenty two, that the sixteen fifty per stall fee be discounted for twenty twenty two by fifty percent. And that um, we would move forward in twenty twenty three with that sixteen fifty um, per stall fee.
Thank you, Council Melnick. I feel like we have debated this. Is there a, any other comments from counselor or Council Malick? Do you wish to wrap it up? Council Mount, like, Council Waxer, and then I'll go to Council Melnick.
Uh, I, I thought I heard uh, Mr. Given refer to the able flexibility in unique circumstances. Do we need to address that in this? In this uh, motion?
Um, Mr. Given, do you want to speak to that, or should we? Just not sure where to go here.
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Hall. I think uh, in this circumstance, um, provide council trying to identify every uh, unique issue that may come up and give uh, binding direction to administration on every single scenario that may come up could be limiting in terms, and, and actually might restrict us from being as flexible as we might wish to be. Um, so uh, yeah, unless there's some specifics that council can make of uh, to Council Waxer's question, I think no, we don't need additional direction to be flexible, or how to be flexible, um, when there are unique circumstances that come up. Um, and in fact, I suggest that there may be some risk, uh, because there will be some great idea that comes forward from one of our great business owners uh, that council and administration hadn't considered, and we'll have to figure out how to deal with it. But if council sets too many rules, uh, that it, that makes it more challenging for us to be able to respond rather than less. Uh, it could, could be counterproductive. Um, I think that the direction that council is setting here uh, and with the previous motion really provides us enough uh, for administration to move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Um, Council Melnick? Did you wish to close debate?
Thank you very much for everyone's comments. Um, I uh, do look forward to um, moving forward with this. And um, hopefully we've provided guidance to the business community for this operating year.
Thank you, Council Melnick. I will call the question. All in favor? There are none opposed, so that motion carries. We are moving on to seven point two, but we are at fifteen minutes to, to twelve. Do we want to get through a paid parking exemption program, then call a lunch break? Do we think this is going to take some time? Uh, okay, we're gonna go for it. So, new business item seven point two. There is attachment, and I will pass the floor to Mr. Given.
Sure. Uh, again, I'll do very brief introduction. Miss Nadon is here uh, to present the report. Again, um, council had previously asked for administration to bring forward an opportunity for council to discuss a resident exemption. Um, and we're seeking your direction on uh, what that should look like. Uh, the importance here is that administration does need to know so that we can work with um, our parking provider to uh, implement that kind of exemption, whatever council directs. The administrative recommendation you'll see in the report is the same as was contained in the original paid parking wrap-up report. Uh, administration is recommending that council approve an exemption for up to two hours per parking session for any resident that is registered in the system. Um, with that, I'll leave it to Miss Nadon to maybe cover some of the highlights of uh, how administration sort of assessed the alternatives that were under consideration at previous council meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Given, for the introduction. Um, as Mr. Given outlined, uh, administration's recommendation is to provide a number of hours for parking sessions for resident exemptions. And essentially, I would like to draw your attention to the table under the discussion where Mr. Given has convinced me of the value of presenting items in this format. And uh, this is the discussion we had around program type, so under number of hours, we can see that low customer friction, uh, low administrative workload, also low revenue generation. But um, in order to provide a program that residents will want to utilize and that will be easy to communicate and that we know is gonna get used. Uh, we're suggesting that uh, two hours per parking session. So that means um, it could be several sessions in the same day, which we are aware that that's the, the proposal here. And um, also it would allow residents to simply register their vehicles in the program at the beginning of the summer. And then they would not be required to tap in and out or to log their sessions as they go downtown to park. And the rationale behind the two hours is that on-street parking will be at a two-hour limit. And therefore, from an enforcement standpoint, it becomes uh, monitoring of those resident, resident cars that are in the zone. But really, it's the two-hour parking that we would be looking at. So from an enforcement standpoint, it makes a lot of sense. From a communication standpoint, it would be quite easy to encourage visitors to sign up for their session or for their account with the service provider once in the summer, and that's it. You don't have to tap in and tap out every time you go. And then um, we suggest the same approach in parking lots. So that is where uh, there would be a bit of a difference where the time limit in parking lots will not be two hours. So from an enforcement standpoint, uh, we'll have to monitor that differently. There is an option called uh, electronic chalking, so instead of physically chopping tires as our officers go out and scan the plates, they have a mechanism to keep track of uh, how long vehicles have been there, even though they don't tap in and out. Um, so that is administration's recommendation, um, two hours per parking session for any resident registered in the system. So that's the part where we imply that people will not have to tap in and out. Uh, the other options being a certain amount of preloaded credits, so that could be a dollar amount that would be assigned to each user. It could be weekly, monthly, by the season. Um, but that would require uh, a medium customer friction, as in people would have to tap in and out. Uh, if we use that method, revenue generation arguably could be a bit higher than uh, exemptions as we're proposing on the two-hour basis. Uh, encourages walking is one of the criteria we've outlined in there, because we heard from council that uh, environmental stewardship and promoting alternative methods, methods of transportation was a criteria for your decision-making. Um, and the administrative workload to keep track of those credits, reload them with the service provider. So again, medium, a bit more uh, time-consuming for administration to implement. And then no exemption, we rate it as high customer friction. And I have to say, from a communication standpoint, last year, the amount of time that my staff spent filtering emails and getting back to residents that were requesting uh, free parking, that is why we rated that as high here. And uh, and that no exemption is essentially what happened last year, right? So revenue generation is high because people would have to pay, encourages walking because of the same reason, obviously. And uh, administrative workload being quite a bit more uh, on our end, mainly around communications, not so much about enforcement. Um, so those are the highlights. I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Nadon. Any questions from council? Counselor Keller-Harampe?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall, through to uh, Mr. Don. So each household, if they had four vehicles that had to register before vehicle, if I'm accurate.
Deputy Mayor Hall, through to Counselor Keller-Harampe, it, it would be per vehicle. So each vehicle has to be registered in the system, and as long as you can provide the associated paperwork to show that it is a, a local vehicle. It shouldn't be, there, there would be no limitations per household, as long as each vehicle is registered, and that's how we would keep track of it by scanning the plates.
Thank you.
Thank you for your answer. Any other question or any questions or comments from other counselors? Counselor Demota?
Yeah, I just uh, for clarification, um, people that reside in areas that, where we have paid parking on the street, for an example, uh, what's proposed for cannot drive. Um, would they be completely exempt from parking in front of where they live? For an example, or would they have to find another place to park? So that, I'm, I'm all for uh, doing this, and, and again, it might be a trial. Uh, this could be a pilot within, within the, the actual program. Because we're, we're not gonna know if people are gonna be out jockeying their cars every two hours. It's up, because it does say up to two hours per session, right? Not per day. Uh, but uh, having said that, I want to be clear on those residents who do reside on uh, in areas that have paid parking out in front.
Miss it on?
Thank you for the question, Counselor Demota. Um, I think on this one, it's, that's sort of the interface between the residential areas or resident-only uh, permit system, which is a different conversation. But I, if I understand your question correctly, you're referring specifically to within the paid parking area. And I think the answer for that one would be that there is a two-hour restriction in those areas already. So therefore, parking your vehicle for any length of time longer than that is sort of unlikely to happen or would have been prohibited prior to paid parking in any event. Mind you, from nine to five was the guideline there. So how we work that uh, two-hour parking requirement within the nine AM to nine PM paid parking requirement? That's the types of discussions that I'm having with uh, our bylaw and operations staff currently. But um, directly to your question, I think the answer is they wouldn't have been able to park there initially, so that will not change. But how we address residential areas is a different question altogether, from the exemption program, from the paid parking zones.
Thank you, Miss it on. Counselor Demota?
Yeah, I appreciate that for clarity, and just to follow up, like, just because we've done it in the past, might not mean that that's uh, you know, best practice. So, you know, because uh, let's say you have a, a uh, approved accommodation in the permitted area. You're allowed to have X amount of vehicles and then passes for whatever. You know, I'm, I'm trying to think of, I, I do believe, particularly because I've resided in those two-hour areas at one point uh, that there, and I'm not accusing anybody of relaxing the rules, but I believe that, you know, uh, people that did live in the area did not get um, forced to move their vehicles, and, and maybe in some cases they did uh, in the past. But I think if we're going to do something differently, we should evaluate this on a case-by-case basis and then just have some room for appeal. Because there might be some instances where you might have a senior citizen or somebody that needs their car, and they don't have a parking area in the back. And we're not gonna ask them to hike down the street. So I think it's about making it as user-friendly as possible, but also at the same time, like, you know, promote more walking in the community. So uh, I, I think that there could be, um, I just want to be clear and, and, you know, we're not making any decisions today, the recommendations. But I, I think going forward, those things should be considered, from my point of view.
Miss it on?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. Um, Counselor Demota, I just pulled up the map of uh, the new areas. So I, I, I see your question a bit differently now with uh, Geeky Street, for example, now being included in uh, the on-street extension for twenty twenty two, so how that would affect those residents. Uh, so my answer from earlier applies to the downtown area, which has been two-hour parking all along. Um, so certainly, I think this is something we can consider and look at as part of the residential permits, which is separate from this conversation, but I appreciate your input. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or que- uh, Mayor Ireland?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. I, I would benefit um, from another um, attempt to explain to me what a parking session consists of. It, it seems to me that that is ripe for both um, friction and administrative workload for, particularly for individuals who might have a desire for extended parking. Um, what constitutes a, a session, and even with electronic chalking, if somebody runs out and moves their wheels, um, half a rotation. Um, is that a new parking session? It, it just seems to me that without knowing what we're talking about, that is an area where there could be friction and an excessive demand on our workforce.
Miss it on?
Deputy Mayor Hall, to Mayor Ireland, the answer to your question is yes. So if you move your tires, that is a new parking session. So we are aware of that, and we have considered that, and I mean, arguably, you move across the street potentially, or but yeah, so if you park for two hours and you move your vehicle to the next available spot and park there for another two hours, that is within the, the guidelines that we are anticipating people might use the program. Or um, you go downtown in the morning for one item and you return at a later point that same day. And it's a new session at that time is, is also correct. So, and, and that is the case with the existing two-hour parking restriction. So if someone wanted to get around that, they could simply move their vehicle a few feet and call it a new session.
Thank you for that. I have a question for administration regarding the administration workload going from low to medium from number of hours to preloaded credits. Is that mostly because each car has to be registered in the system? I, I think I just missed that when you were explaining that a bit earlier.
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. I think um, generally, when people think of administrative workload in relation to this, people think of enforcement, but there's also um, communications work that is quite intensive and also working with the service provider to ensure that we monitor those credits and that they are reapplied at a certain interval. So it's more so an increase in the administrative and communications workload than from an enforcement standpoint. It, it wouldn't really generate that much more work, is my understanding.
Okay, so when a, a vehicle is loaded with credits, once everything is set up in the system, is it easy just to add a credit? Add a credit? I guess you haven't experienced this yet, but is that what you might understand?
Well, so in the context of resident exemptions, those credits would be added by the municipality. Versus, so last summer, for example, if a resident had an account created with the service provider, you would put in your credit card information or add your own credits to your own account, so you could continue using them. In the context of an exemption, we would have to be monitoring and adding credits at whatever rate council may decide if that was the the way the decision went. Um, from an enforcement perspective, they scan the plates, right? So they walk around with a device and then they input the plate number, and it either returns as paid, unpaid, or in this case, resident. So any vehicle that's registered as a resident one time at the beginning of the season would just come back as a resident plate, and therefore, the enforcement would occur more around the two-hour parking restriction than the actual paid parking provisions.
Okay, thank you for, yeah, thank you for that. Any other comments or questions from council? Counselor Melnick?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall, through you to Miss Nadon. Um, in your um, initial part of the presentation, you mentioned about uh, the paid uh, how parking would be handled in the parking lots versus a street. Um, but I don't see that specifically in the written documentation, so if I could ask you to perhaps expand on that. Um, is it still a two-hour parking session? Or is there some consideration because the charge is less in the parking lot than on the street? And I think that is what I'm, I thought I was hearing, but I just need clarification that that's in fact the case.
Deputy Mayor Hall, to Counselor Melnick, I think what I was alluding to earlier was more so around uh, the existing parking restrictions. So regardless of paid parking, uh, it's two-hour on-street parking currently in, in the downtown core, the parking lots do not have a restriction currently. Uh, and therefore, seventy-two hours is the Provincial Traffic Act uh, dictates that after seventy-two hours, a vehicle is considered abandoned. So um, managing the parking managing the parking limitations, the hourly parking limitations on the lot themselves is a question that has been raised administratively that we haven't resolved yet. But residents parking in those lots for a two hour period would essentially be harder to monitor. And for us to go out there and enforce, we will be covering those areas, of course, but triggering, you know, how long has that person been there? Has it been two hours? That's where the digital chalking comes into play. But they would not necessarily be violating the parking restriction in terms of how long they can park there. So it's sort of two different provisions for enforcement that we can use, one being paid parking, but the other being how long you're allowed to park there, paid parking or not. And this ties into the conversation as well around the 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Right? So how long are you allowed to park in those stalls outside of the paid 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 parking hours? So those are the sorts of conversations that we're having internally, but so rest, under the current proposal, residents would get two hour parking in the parking lot. And if they wanted to stay longer and not move their vehicle is where they would then have to pay the hourly rate or the rest of the day rate. Or to Mayor Ireland's point, move their vehicle to a different stall and then it's a new session and they get another two hour free. So there's a few different ways to look at it.
Thank you, Miss Nidon. Councillor Demota?
Well, I would like to move this forward and and make a motion to, I'm not making a motion, but I'm just, I'm just saying that to have this restricted to, you know, on-street parking and not in parking lots, because I want to discuss something further and having parking passes available to residents that have to park downtown as a means of getting down there or having a vehicle. So basing it on some type of number, much like we did with the the street seating. So that people, you know, it's going to promote walking and riding your bike and stuff. But for the people that do, you're not penalized for $24 a day parking in a parking lot downtown. So we need to come up with some type of program. I believe that we need to come up with some type of program that is going to be to help those that need to get downtown, whether you're, you know, you have accessibility issues or it's a need for your business or if you're just in an extreme corner of the community and and you have to use your vehicle to get downtown for any reason.
Thank you, councillor Demota. Comments from council? Mayor Ireland?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. Firstly, to councillor Demota's point, I thought that we had set a maximum day rate of $12 a day for parking lots. But I wonder in order to provide flexibility, is it possible to combine both of these suggestions? So for those residents who wish to simply register their vehicle and abide by the two hours per session, they can do that. But if you see a need for extended parking and don't want to be bothered running out to shift your car a bit, could you get the preloaded credits? Which we could put some maximum number of that and then if you wanted to leave your car for six hours or eight hours or 12 hours in a parking lot, our staff could presumably electronically deduct those hours off the credit that you got and you could use that sparingly and combine the ability to park for longer periods of time for those residents who need it and for those who aren't interested. Just register their vehicle once and use the the two hour per parking session.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. Miss Nidon?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall to Mayor Ireland. I think that option is already built in, except the onus is on the parker and not on administration. So I get downtown, I park in a parking lot, there is no time limitation in terms of, I won't be offside the the prescription for parking for more than two hours because I'm in a parking lot, not on the street. And then, once my two hours of free resident exemption is passed, it can be done remotely or on the app. So there's no requirement for the person to go back to the vehicle necessarily and then to apply credits. Whether those credits are to be funded by the individual or whether those credits are part of an exemption program that the municipality sponsors would be a question for council. But I would suggest that the system can already accommodate that and that the onus would be on the user. Transferring that onus to staff in terms of administrative workload is something that would be quite onerous, I would suggest. We already have a relatively large parking area with a fixed number of staff that need to patrol and enforce. So so it exists, but whether council will want to supplement with free credits is is a question.
Thank you, Mr. Don. Councillor Demota?
Well, I'm glad that was addressed because that's the point I was going to make. If I'm going to park and I and I want to get two hours for free, I should go and register that time in and, you know, get the two hours for free. And then I don't know if the system is set up to to tell you that your time is about to expire and you need to pay. But in other areas, that's the setup. And I found it quite useful in the past. So even if you just go and pay your $2 or $4 or whatever it is, $6, you know, you get a time limit and then as it's about to expire, if you're out for lunch, you're doing whatever, you're allowed to load it. And I think it should be a responsibility of the people driving the cars and not for staff to go and monitor and say, okay, well, you've got credit. We'll let you stay another two hours. So to me, that's, that doesn't make sense. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Demota. Any other comments or questions from council? I don't see any hands. I would like to speak on this briefly. I well, I think that two hours a day to me, and again, I'm always going to be a person who's going to explore other means of transportation. If the credit system didn't seem so burdensome for administration, I'd love to explore that option. Maybe with the potential of, say, a community member earning credits by volunteering or or doing other things that are of value to our our community. I was one of the councillors who voted against the exemption program, again, just on principle that I think we need to be exploring other modes of transportation and this conversation about resident exemption, our conversation about patios, we've been talking about cycling, I just, it, it really feels like we need to do a big look at our town site and our and how we use our roads and how every resident uses our roads, whether they're walking or cycling or driving and come up with a long term plan. I'm happy with how the vote went for patios because it's just, it's just for the summer. I do think a lot of this stuff really ties in together. And we seem to looking at everything in separate pieces. Yeah, but I, I mean, I like the idea of credits. I think it might be too difficult for administration, especially kind of the first year we're really going forward with this program. Any other comments or questions from from council? Councillor Waxer, and then I'll get to councillor Melnick.
I too really am drawn to the credit, preloaded credit system where acknowledging that all locals at some point have a need to be downtown in their vehicle and that that we acknowledge that and provide that opportunity. I I'm concerned about having people who work downtown park on the street and move their cars around for the day, which really challenges us to to get for revenue generation and also doesn't provide opportunities for for people with with mobility issues to to find a parking spot. So I think that the preloaded credits kind of is a nice balance of acknowledging the need for residents sometimes to have a vehicle downtown. And but at the same time, maybe prevents people using taking up a lot of the space in the downtown core on a regular basis.
Thank you, councillor Waxer. Councillor Demota?
I contemplated that and, oh, sorry. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. I contemplated what councillor Waxer said. And, you know, if you're, if you're employed at a place of business or you own a place of business downtown in the downtown core and you get out of there every two hours, like, you've got to have one incredible boss to let you do that every two hours or you've got the time to go and do that. And I don't think a lot of people do during the summer. So I think that, you know, putting the bug in front of the horse on this one, I think we just, you know, again, see how it rolls out. And if it becomes an issue, then we can address it midstream too. Like, it's not, we're not writing everything in stone. I think the intent is to to make something workable. And today, we're not making a decision. So I'm prepared to make a motion if if everybody has their information in need. All right, okay. So I move that committee recommended council that council approve a resident exemption paid parking for up to two hours for on-street, for an on-street parking session. Is that clear?
Thank you, councillor. Yeah, thank you, councillor Demota. Open the floor to debate. Councillor Melnick?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. I, I appreciate the intent of the motion. It doesn't clarify, however, for administration, I think how they handle the parking lot. If there is a $12 per day maximum, what what is implied here then is that residents will pay over above the two hours free up to $12 in addition or six more hours for the, to be able to park on an eight hour day is what I'm hearing.
So are you asking for a friendly amendment just to remove on-street? Because, yeah, you're right. So if you're going to go park downtown, you get two hours for free. But if it's an all-day session, you pay $12.
In a parking lot?
In a parking lot, yeah. So two hours is two hours across the board, no matter what.
Suggesting the friendly amendment for clarity.
Yeah, it makes sense because you want people to, like, you don't want people to park on the street for two hours. You prefer them to go to a parking lot. So, yeah, that that makes sense. I'll take that as a friendly amendment. So I move to make, I move to use the recommendation as is so that committee recommend council approve a resident exception from paid parking for up to two hours per parking session for any resident registered in the system. Good enough?
Thank you, councillor Demota. I wonder, is it possible to change per session to per day? That might just eliminate that person driving around and moving their vehicle? Or is that possible? So I really believe the intent is that we allow residents to be downtown a couple hours a day. I don't think the intent is to have them drive their vehicles around to councillor Callaghan. It was like, I was, I think I was cutting out.
The problem with that, thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall, the problem with limited to two hours, like, you may have a resident that goes down to the pharmacy and there for 10 minutes. So how does bylaw, how do they only know that they're 10 minutes? And that's kind of, I think, where we run into trouble there. Because several senior residents may go downtown three times a day, but they might only be parked for 10 minutes each time. But we have no way to know that. So I think we have to kind of leave it open.
That makes sense. Thank you, councillor Callaghan. Miss Nidon?
Deputy Mayor Hall, I just wanted to highlight that if anything is possible because it's a digital system, so the flexibility is quite high. But if we were to go to two hours per day, I would suggest that then residents would have to tap. So would have to use the system and tap in and out, which in terms of friction cost would be a bit higher. But and to councillor Callaghan MP's point, that is how we would monitor. So if you go to the pharmacy for 20 minutes, you tap in, you tap out, you still have an hour and 40, say, on your two hour allocation, right? So the system would have to be adjusted, but anything is possible.
Thank you, Miss Nidon. Any other, Mayor Ireland? You, you're on mute, Mayor Ireland.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Deputy Mayor Hall, if I understand the motion correctly, whether it's been amended in a friendly fashion or otherwise, I am opposed to the motion and inclined, even though I am opposed to exemptions generally, if there are going to be exemptions, I am more persuaded by the comments of councillor Waxer and in favor of a credit system. So if you register, get a number of credits, we'll have to decide how many hours that might be. Maybe it's 500 hours for the duration of the season and you use those credits whenever and however you want. Park for six hours downtown or in a parking lot. But you use up six hours of your credit. And that, to me, seems like a workable system and gets away from exactly what councillor Waxer was talking about, particularly for mobility challenged people. If they find a spot in the first place to go out and then have to move it to start a new session every two hours. If we just work on a system of credits, recognizing that there are more administrative challenges with that. I think it, overall, it seems like a better system to me. So I'm opposed to to the motion and would be more inclined to support the first of the alternatives that administration has presented to us.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. Councillor Callaghan.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. Through you to Mr. Don. If we were to go with the preloaded credits, does that mean that anybody that goes downtown would have to tap in and tap out in order to register when they're using it?
Deputy Mayor Hall to councillor Callaghan MP, I believe the answer to that is yes. And it also raises people without smartphones. So how would they tap in and tap out? And so we are working on council-approved funding for two kiosks this year. And so where they would be located and in relation to where you might be going downtown, if you have to go to a kiosk to essentially tap in, tap out, that might add to the complexity of of using the system, particularly with, for people with mobility challenges.
I just, I just found last year, as Mr. Don said earlier, that administration spent a lot of time with our senior population that some don't have phones, a lot do, a lot don't have smartphones. I think this is going to be a huge issue and it's going to be back on our admin to have to sort this like so, or do we go that you get, everybody gets preloaded credits? However, when bylaw scans the car that they deduct and then when all the credits are run out, that we send our residents an update to say you're out that you can come in and pay. But I think if we're going to depend on our seniors to go and tap or people that don't have a smartphone, I think we're going to run into the same problems that we did last year where people are going to be angry.
Thank you, councillor Callaghan. B. Councillor Demota?
I'm ready to close. So if anybody else has any debate, then I have my points that I want to make.
Thank you, councillor Demota. Any other comments from council? Before councillor Demota closes? I see no hands, councillor Demota?
Well, I just want to say that everybody's got some, some really good points. And the reason why I'm putting this forward is that we still have the ability to assess this as we go along, much like we did. I don't think it needs to be written in stone. Like I said, if people are out there jockeying their vehicles, then they've got more time and, you know, to go and do that. So good on them if you're able to pull it off. Bylaw will be able to assess that. If it does become an issue, we can address it. And we can change it as we go along. Other agencies in in our province do it on a regular basis. Um, and we can change it as we go along. Um, other agencies in, in our province do it on a regular basis. Um, and I think that, um, you know, it, it, you, you, uh, Mayor Ireland discussed mobility issues. If people have to go out every two hours, if you have a two-hour credit and. Um, or you're a resident and you get your two hours for that session and you want to stay there longer. You pay two dollars to go and stay there for another two hours. If you have to go out, move your vehicle, then go and move your vehicle. Like, we have to make flow of it. And that doesn't mean you're gonna find a spot right away, especially when it's high demand. And that's why we have paid parking. So. Your two hours are up, you gotta move your vehicle. If you can find a spot, good luck. And if it becomes an issue, we address it. Like right now, I think we're not making a decision today. It's a recommendation, uh, to council and. I think we should just move it forward. So I, I'm not gonna make an amendment. Uh, you can vote in favor or against if you want to, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Demora. The question is on the table. Everyone under- understands the motion? I will call the question, all in favor of the motion. And opposed. So that motion is tied, so it does not move forward. Is that correct? Yes. Okay, moving on to item seven point three, but I feel like this might be an appropriate time to call a lunch break. Does that sound, does that sound good with everybody? Um, Mayor Ireland.
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor. I, I'm in favor of a lunch break, but I would suggest that item seven point two is not yet resolved. I think we still have to. Give some direction to administration. Um, and a recommendation to ourselves for the next meeting. So I'm just suggesting we start again at seven point two when we come back, not at seven point three.
Okay, that sounds great. I will call a lunch break at twelve twenty-two, meeting back at one o'clock. Is that? An appropriate amount of time? Okay. Have a great lunch. We are probably very close to one PM. Oh, there we go. We're one PM. I, I will end our lunch break. And we will start our meeting. I believe Ralph wanted to make a. Quick motion before we started. Point of order.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Hall. Seeing as how we have a, a long agenda ahead of us, I'd like to make the motion now to extend this council meeting. Beyond the four-hour time limit so we can continue, um, with debate and not have to stop to do that motion.
Thank you, Counselor Melnick. All in favor? That is carried. Okay, jumping back into resident exemption parking. We, I, I guess we'll start, we should talk about a credit system. And what that might look like or some ideas. Um, are there any counselors that wish to start that discussion? Counselor Waxer.
So basically, I guess my feeling about it is that. Uh, or is that we, uh, encourage people to be moving more toward the, uh. To parking in the parking lots and our local people and, um, recognize but may. And maybe making that free for residents and perhaps giving a small, uh. Prepaid, preloaded credit for, um, some degree of parking downtown. Cause we all know that there's times when it is necessary, but, um, it, it seems to me that we should be. Discouraging people from parking for long periods of time in the downtown core. Um, on the street when, um, for most of us, it's quite possible to walk. From the parking lot to the downtown core.
Thank you, Counselor Waxer. Any comments from council? Counselor Kelleherampe.
I don't have an issue with the prepaid credits or going to a credit system. But we have to make it user-friendly. We can't just depend on a smartphone for it. Like, we have to be able to. You know, that was one of the biggest things that we ran into last summer. For seniors, we ended up giving out a number of passes because they didn't have phones or didn't know how to use them. And I think. If we don't make it simple, we're going to run into that again this year. And that's really hard on administration. Um, therefore, I like Counselor Waxer's idea. Do we allow residents to park freely in the parking lots? And we give them so much of credits towards, um, downtown, but rather than having them to tap. Maybe if they start to run out of credits, then we send them a letter.
Thank you, Counselor Kelleherampe. Counselor Demora.
I know that council, uh, the last motion was defeated, so I have to accept that. Um, you know. I just. I think we're trying to overcomplicate things. So. We're, we're throwing too many variables into something that we don't have precise information for. And I think that, you know, another year of going through this, um. Make it less complicated right now on bylaw, because they're gonna have to go through enough to, to stick handle what we're gonna. Um, move forward with in the summertime. I don't think two kiosks are going to be enough for, um, you know, the future. Uh, it might be a good step forward, but, uh, judging from what happened last year with people going in different directions, um. Regardless of the locations we put them in, it's still gonna make it difficult for people that don't have smartphones. So having said that, um. We have to find a, something that's going to be, um, easy to use for everybody. So we've already decided that. Uh, it's twelve dollars per day, um, in the parking lots. And, you know, I was reminded of that, so thank you. And then. Uh, you know, we, we understood, we made, um, we understand that we, we're making some concession to have. Uh, resident, residents, uh, have some exemptions downtown somewhere. So. Um, I think just whatever it is that is the easiest, I thought the last one was. So, um, now it's complicated and I don't know what to do.
Thank you, Counselor Demora. I have a, a question I'd like to ask administration. When, uh, bylaw scans the license plate. Wh- what kind of information pops up? It'll be their credits. Are we able to? Determine, uh, bylaw scans the plate and, oh, this person doesn't have the ability to use a smartphone. So on their dashboard or they have an exemption to this. Program, because typically I would assume that might be a, a member of our senior population. And. It, it does that, what pops up when you scan the license plate? Do you know? Yeah, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Hall, I don't know that I have all of the details to answer your question, but my understanding is. It comes up as paid or not paid or permit. So that where the, so the resident exemption would come up as a permit, or, or officers would see that this person is registered in the system. As a resident. And, um, I think any sort of notion where moving to a, uh, pre. Preloaded credits would require the users to activate that themselves. Um, if we were looking for our officers to be doing that, I think that we would have to have a look at the resource allocation that's required to. Uh, enable that on behalf of residents. So, so the data we pull from the system when we're scanning is. Has limitations, is what I'm suggesting.
Okay, th- thank you for that. Um, thank you, uh, Counselor Demora.
Okay, how about this as a compromise? Two hours seemed a little bit long for people to create more flow. Why don't we aim for an hour? Uh, per parking session. So if you need to go out, move your car every two hours, it's just gonna be a pain in the butt. Or every hour, it's gonna be a pain in the butt. I don't know anybody that could pull that off. And, you know, if you're taking advantage of the system that way, again, like. I, I think I'm being repetitious, but, um, honestly, I, I. We, the motion got defeated for two hours. That doesn't mean we can't rebe- revisit the same motion, but reduce it. And I think that's a good compromise. Um, cause I think we're, we're talking about allocating unnecessary resources right now until we find out if it's a problem. We're creating a problem in our minds that may not exist. Throwing it out there. So I'm willing to move that after some discussion.
Thank you, Counselor Demora. Any comments from council? Counselor Mel, um, Ms. Nidon, and then I'll go to Counselor Melnick. Did you, let's just speak to Rico's comments, Ms. Nidon.
Yes, thank you for that. Um, and I just wanted to highlight that. The, the recommendation to have two hours per parking session is no stranger to the fact that the current parking limitation is two hours. So from a, an enforcement standpoint, to expect our officers to have a one-hour turnaround to go and enforce a, a one-hour. Permit is, is a bit of a, bit of a challenge, as I see it.
Counselor Melnick, you had your hand up, and then I will get to, uh, you, Counselor Waxer.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Hall, and I, I would like to, um, invite his worship to, um. Uh, if he wishes to bring up the, the thought of five hundred credits, uh, assuming a credit is an hour. Uh, or if we were to go to a credit system for our residents. Um, I think what we're hearing is we don't have the data to know if. Two hours a day or two hundred and sixty-eight hours, uh, for six months or five hundred hours is. Um, adequate, uh, for most residents. I think we're trying to work around. Exemptions and accommodations for. Uh, a small number of residents. Um, if we were to do a, a five hundred hour credit. But on a trial year, ask residents to register in and out, to actually see how much they actually use. There may be an appetite to, to have residents go into the program. To help us get the data that shows maybe we don't need to do anything with credits. Just allow residents to park and, and use their own good judgment. Um, it's, again, it's kind of a off-the-beat idea. Uh, we're encouraging people to, to not park in the downtown core, but I was just trying to think how I would use five hundred da- hours a year. And I would find it difficult in six months to find that I'd be parking downtown for that much. So it's a bit of a crazy idea out there to do an experimental program or a program that wouldn't have consequences in the way of fines. But to ask our residents to, to populate a database, to show us what resident usage really looks like on a per-pass, per-day. Uh, basis. And, um, I, I think that might help us move forward with how to approach this.
Thank you, Counselor Melnick. Comments or thoughts, Counselor Demora?
I remember a similar style of discussion happening when we were visiting, uh, reduced speed limits last term. On that council, and I understand it was a different council, but it was this type of process that slowed everything down and then made going forward completely impossible. Um, I'm, I'm, all these thoughts started coming to my head again, and we're, we're getting caught. Um, shooting ourselves in the foot, um, by impeding our progress. And I, I. I'm having a hard time thinking about how to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Demora. Um, Counselor Waxer.
Uh, through you Deputy Mayor Hall to administration, I was, um, unclear as to whether. Um, it, you can park in the downtown core for more than two hours and it would just. It would just, um, continue to charge you or would, or is there a, a fine imposed if you're. Beyond the two-hour period, uh, over and above the cost of the, the parking.
Ms. Nidon, go ahead.
Deputy Mayor Hall, through the Counselor Waxer, our intention is to maintain the two-hour parking limit downtown. That is the, the hard prescription that is not related to paid parking. So, so yes, if you stayed there for more than two hours, you could be subject to. A parking fine, not necessarily a paid parking fine, but a parking fine.
Thank you for that. Any comments or questions? I, um, I feel we just spent, you know, a few hours talking about patio seating and. Putting a price on these stalls, on these parking stalls and to, and I. The credit system made more, makes more sense to me in the fact that you can't go downtown, move your car every hour, every two hours, however, however it works. Um, I want to be encouraging our, our residents to seek other forms of transportation. I like the idea of having the parking lots free. As opposed to, uh, downtown core. But again, I recognize that not, that's not possible for everyone and you do have to go downtown sometimes in your vehicle. I just question why we're encouraging our residents to, you know, park downtown, move it, move every two hours when we've put a price on these parking stalls. I, I, I do most likely agree that the two hours per, per session was a simpler option, but it, I. I don't, I, I think we need to look at a credit system. It makes more sense when, once we, that we put a price on these parking stalls. Counselor Demora.
Well, I, I don't mean to debate because we're, we're not debating, but I think that, and I don't mean to offend you. I'm just saying, I think that, that, that's counterintuitive. To say that we put a price on it, um, you know, these stalls, including the parking lot, but let's give the parking lot away for free. That doesn't make sense either. So. I don't mean to challenge you on that. It's just, I can't wrap my head around it. And I don't think we're discouraging. I still think we're encouraging people to ride and. And walk their bikes. And, and I think we're creating stories that don't exist yet. Until we have better data to confirm what we're assuming. It's, it doesn't make sense to, to make all these assumptions right now. The other opportunity is we can rescind the last motion that we just made. I don't know if we're allowed to do that, uh, right after. Um, if somebody wants to do that, but I can't, uh, I don't think I can as the original mover.
I, I saw you point, um. Counselor Hall. But just at my screen, but I'll take that as an invitation, um, to speak. I, I need a little guidance from administration as to how bylaw. Circulate. So I, I am inclined, as I indicated earlier, to a credit system and as. To Counselor Melnick's inquiry, yes, my thought was some number of, of hours that. Um, you would be credited with and then. Spend them as you will. I am sensitive to. The point raised by Counselor Kelleherampe that, um, a credit system would probably require people to. To tap in and maybe that's not possible for, for some segment of our population. So the question for administration is, do we anticipate? Sort of a two-hour, um. Viewing of cars on the streets by administration and. Could it simply be that if, if we issue? Permits and credits, people register their vehicle. If somebody registers and says. I want to register and get my credits, but I don't have a smartphone and I'm not interested in sorting that out. Every time we do our rounds, if that car electronically, the, the license plate is recorded, we simply subtract. Two hours from their credit. So there's nothing for them to do, but they get loaded with the number of credits at the start of the program. And we monitor when they get used. And then nobody has to, or at least those people who can't. Um, are not required to sign in. Others who choose to tap in. Can tap in for fifteen minutes and only use that much of their credit. But if you're not going to avail yourself of the technology. Then when we see you, it's two hours off your credit. Um, it, I don't know whether that's possible, but, um. I see Mr. Given has graced our screen again, so he can probably tell me whether or not that's possible.
Thanks. Yeah, thanks Deputy Mayor Hall. Uh, Mayor Ireland, I unfortunately can't say with one hundred percent certainty whether that is possible or not. Um, I will say though that it is, uh, uh, more active management. I mean, it is a bit akin to keeping a tab for everybody. Um, I would hope that the technology is advanced enough that it does that kind of calculation. I would hope that the technology is advanced enough that it does that kind of calculation. I I can't say today for certain if it if it does. And that's where administration's initial view was that if there was a credit system, it would require the user of the credit system to be tapping in and tapping out. So to, I mean, if you want to think about it, I mean, if we want to think of it as the old-fashioned meters, the idea of a credit system is that the municipality gives somebody a pocket full of quarters, but they still are responsible for plugging the meter when they show up, right? We gave them the quarters, so it didn't cost them anything, but they still have to go to the meter and plug the meter. I my my initial suspicion is that the electronic systems may be somewhat similar, that it requires an intervention of the user to to start a session. And if they don't make that intervention of tapping to pay or using one of the other ways of doing it, then they would be identified as unpaid. The question is now, does the system have a backend to say, well, this was unpaid, but this is the type of, you know, a user that has a bunch of quarters in their account and just deduct the right amount of quarters for for this session? I I don't know that. One challenge that I can see is that we would not know how long the user was there for. So we would show up, scan their plate. We don't know if they've been there for 15 minutes or 45 minutes. And the system does charge, I think, on 15-minute intervals, like the very, very small intervals. So a potential barrier would be that, you know, our officers wouldn't have a sense of how much to charge somebody, you know, had had they been parking there for 15 minutes. Do they plan on staying another half hour? That said, if council wanted to provide the the credit system, we would go back to the parking service provider and identify what is technically possible with their system before implementation. And if it turned out that something was not possible, we would be required to come back to council and inform you of that, and then council could consider that technical limitation.
Thank you for that. So really, my question was, though, if if our enforcement officers are going to be around roughly every two hours, then for those who can't tap in, every time that they are seen parking within that two hours, they get charged for two hours. We don't worry about whether it's 15 minutes, but if you want to only use 15 minutes of your credit, then figure out how to tap into the system. Otherwise, the default is every two hours we do a sweep, and if your if your vehicle is electronically tagged in that sweep, then two hours taken from your credit. That's the way I was thinking, but it only works if, in fact, we are doing those sweeps every couple of hours. And if I might, Counselor Hall, I have one additional question that could play into this, and that is with respect to those stalls, parking stalls that are now zoned as handicap stalls or disabled stalls. Are there any rules with respect to timing in there? And could we configure a solution for people who don't have cell phones or might have other challenges and give them the credentials to park in a handicap zone?
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. Everyone can hear me okay? I'm I had to log out of my computer and back onto my phone, so that is the reason I pointed at you earlier, Mayor Ireland, as opposed to verbally welcome you to speak. Are there any other comments or questions from council, or is anyone willing to make a, Counselor Demota?
Well, you know, I'm just contemplating the sweeps and and, you know, certain scenarios discussed, and that's assuming, I know that we've we've hired extra staff to to take care of these, but you know, we have to consider rotations and being called away, being addressing other concerns that happen in the in the community, whether people are going in the wrong direction, a domestic animal issue, or whatever it is. There's lots of things happening in the day of bylaw, and they're not concentrated just solely on chalking tires. So, you know, I understand the intent here, but the more we discuss it, it it's just it's making less and less sense. Again, I don't want to beat the dead horse. I'm going to finish on this one, but I I apologize if it sounds like I'm pontificating, but that's not what I'm trying to do. I'm just trying to bring sense and resolution to this conversation. If I might finish, I just want to say there's a reason why the recommendation came out the way it did. Thank you. I'm done. For sure.
Mr. Don, I saw your hand.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. If I may pick up on Mayor Ireland's question about the 15-minute zones and the which are the drop-off zones and then the accessible parking. There namely around accessible parking, there are some pretty tight restrictions. You need a special license, which is not issued by us. But having that said, if council's intent was to provide access to a segment of the population that may not be able to use their smartphones or has mobility issues, we we do have the ability to issue permits, so not unlike we did last summer with the seniors permit, which was pretty broad, and we ended up issuing a fair amount of permits on that basis. But a a permit program is a possibility where we would, then when our officers scan the plates, they would show up as paid, unpaid, or permit-type, which permit-type can be resident as a whole, but could also be another category that council would deem necessary to to provide special access. And and like I said, I think in in terms of using accessible parking stalls, that might be a bit more complex, but maybe it would give them access to to on-street stalls in general. So that is somewhat different than the resident exemption program, but perhaps a branch off of it, but that is something that administratively could be possible and not. It would require some setup in the backend and some communication to those users, but in terms of bylaw officers on the street, this could be a workable solution, perhaps.
Thank you for that, Mr. Don. Mayor Ireland, do you wish to speak to to that?
No, other than to thank Mr. Don for those comments. I appreciate that. I am better informed, but I I have nothing further.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from council, or do we do I have someone who'd like to make a motion? And I apologize, I'm on my phone, so I have to scroll back and forth between the screens, so maybe keep your hands up a little bit longer than you normally would. Counselor Melnick?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. I would like to make a that motion that committee recommends to council to approve a resident exempt from parking program with preloaded credits for any resident registering in the system to a maximum of 500 credits per year. And the second part of that motion is that administration would be directed to deal with individuals with either mobility or technology issues.
We'll open the floor to any. Counselor Waxer?
Just a point of clarification to council through you, Deputy Mayor Hall, to Counselor Melnick. By credits, are you were you thinking hours or dollars?
In that recommendation, I would suspect that administration would come back to us with what a credit is. Is it is a credit an hour, and are all credits created equal? I think we need them to develop that for us. But a simple way to look at it is a a credit would be an hour, and that credit could be the same either on the street or in a parking lot for residents. But I'd leave that to administration.
Yes, Mr. Given.
Yeah, thanks, Deputy Mayor Hall and Counselor Melnick. I I think administration would actually request direction from council on this because there is a substantial difference. If if credits are dollars, then 500 credits gets at the current rate of $3 an hour gets you, you know, 166 hours of parking. Or if council intends it to be 500 hours of parking, so we are, you know, will take direction whichever way council would wish to go, but there is a material difference in in terms of the the time, and so council needs to give us direction on whether a credit is a dollar credit or a hour credit. So, you know, credits of up to, sorry, credits of equalling $500 per year or credits equalling 500 hours per year. Just and and again, administration can take either direction, but I think providing that definition rather than at this stage would be good if council has an idea of which one of those you would prefer.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Counselor Melnick, do you wish to speak to that? I I know Counselor Keller-Herempe had her hand up as well.
For the sake of clarity, let's call a credit an hour, 500 hours.
Thank you, Counselor Melnick. Counselor Keller-Herempe, I did see your hand up earlier.
Sorry about that. Counselor Waxer asked my question.
Thank you, Counselor Keller-Herempe. Any other debate on this motion? I see no hands. Do I see no hands? Counselor Melnick, do you wish to close debate?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. We've had some great, robust conversation, both at this session and the last session, and I look forward to the vote to move this forward.
Thank you, Counselor Melnick. All council understands the question on the table. I will call the question all in favor. Three, four. I might need some help here with how many were were in favor. I'm sorry. Three, four, five. Okay, and opposed? One, that motion is carried. Okay, thank you very much. I believe we have made it through 7.2. Am I correct? I think so. Okay, moving on to item 7.3, our Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Master Plan. I will, there is an attachment. I will pass it over to Mr. Given to introduce this one.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Hall, and I will be very brief because I believe Ms. Riddell is here to speak to the details of the plan. Council previously viewed, prior to the election, council reviewed a draft of the Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Master Plan. It was sent back for some further revision and feedback from our internal inclusion committee is here with those revisions. And Ms. Riddell can speak to any of the details and answer any questions on the content of the plan.
Hello, everyone. Deputy Mayor Hall, thank you, and through to all of council. In front of you, you've got a report that accompanies the draft 2022 to 2026 Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Master Plan. As Mr. Given said, this was first brought to the last council at the end of 2021. But since many of you are newer, I will just take a minute to kind of go through the report and just describe the plan a little bit. So a huge thank you. This is a collaborative effort, and a a big thank you has to go out to my team in community development, the whole inclusion committee, which included members from all levels of the organization and still includes, and all community municipal departments, and of course, to our com specialists for making it look nice. At the July 6 regular meeting 2021, council approved the Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Policy, and then directed administration to return to a future committee meeting with a plan for policy implementation. In October 2021, community development returned to committee with this five-year Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Master Plan in draft form. And at that time, committee received the draft plan for information and directed us to return with more of a final version in early 2022. The inclusion committee took that direction and did a thorough review of the draft plan and decided that it would be great to bring it in front of council early in 2022 to make sure that it was able to be reviewed before strategic planning. So the Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Policy encompasses not only the organization as a workplace, but also the organization in its service to the public and its role in the community. The EDNI plan breaks down how the organization will implement the EDNI policy. Just for a summary, the policy statement sets out our shared commitment to model organizational equity, inclusion and diversity to more effectively serve a diverse community through equitable policy and operations that allow every citizen to participate in all aspects of community life. The policy further indicates our commitment to continuously strive to identify and then reduce or remove impediments to equity, inclusion and diversity within the workplace and to reduce barriers to public participation in municipal facilities, programs, services and engagement opportunities. The inclusion committee poured over this plan. We received fantastic feedback from everyone. And the engagement of the inclusion committee prior to December 2021 was part of a time-limited grant-funded project through the Alberta municipalities. It used to be called the Alberta Urban Municipalities Association. So that grant came to an end at the end of 2021, but the inclusion committee does remain active, engaged and engaged into 2022 due to the municipalities' approved 2022 operating budget. So it was incorporated into that budget. So the master plan attached basically presents the framework for the next five years of working towards equitable municipal policy and operations. The first part of the plan is more outlining the organization's commitment, the guiding principles for planning implementation over time. And then the second part of the plan goes really in to the implementation plan itself. There are areas of focus that focus inward towards us as an organization, and then there's several areas of focus that really look out into the community in our role in service provision to the community. So this this plan will guide efforts to build a diverse and inclusive workforce and provide inclusive, accessible and equitable programs and services to our residents. We also acknowledge that this is a field that we're constantly learning in and growing in, and that this plan is really going to be thought of as a living document that we can review, update and amend over the five-year period to reflect that learning and that growth. The master plan is a culmination of the last 18 months of collaborative work between inclusion committee members. An adoption by council of the draft EDNI master plan would allow the municipality to ensure that organizational strategic planning and business planning are done through an equity, diversity and inclusion lens, and that the organization's priorities are in line with its vision to offer accessible services, cultural amenities, lifelong learning opportunities, affordable housing and a safe, supportive living environment for all residents. I'm available to answer any questions as best I can. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Riddell. I will open the floor to council for comments or questions. And Counselor Waxer?
I wanted to say congratulations. I think it's beautifully written and really comprehensive. The the one thing that I would love to see included in in this strategy is adding an element to the request for decisions. We we have at the bottom of every request for decision the the financial implications to a decision, and I wonder whether inclusion, if we included the lens of looking at things through the inclusion lens at the end of every at the end of every decision. For instance, the one we just were dealing with was the, was parking and there's an inclusion piece to that. So I think if administration and council is looking at the inclusion part, it may be, it may be a really valuable addition to the request for decision document.
Thank you, Councilor Waxer. Are there any other questions for Ms. Riddell or comments? Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. I just have a few comments. I, I echo credit to Ms. Riddell and her staff for, for a really excellent document. A couple of really small points, and you mentioned funding from what was then Alberta Urban Municipalities, but no longer is. So I, I wonder if there's still an opportunity on the, the front page to, to change that, just to reflect that it's now Alberta municipalities. This is a document that will be with us for a number of years and might be nice to reflect the ongoing entity rather than the past entity. In the introduction, there is a statement that caught me by surprise and perhaps that is just based on my less than full understanding of all the operations of the organization. But there is a reference in the introduction to business units within the organization, that is within the municipality. And I'm not aware that we actually operate in business units. And it's just a, it's an odd phrase to, to throw out there. I appreciate that the intent is to embed equity, diversity and inclusion into the entire organization. But to describe business units that we don't have seemed a little odd to me. And finally, under the guiding principles, we, we end collective responsibility is to lead with respect and tolerance. And personally, I would much prefer to delete the word tolerance. It's very much yesterday's word. And, and I think we could replace that with, lead with respect and promoting equity or words to that effect. But, but I would, I would remove tolerance. Not that we shouldn't be tolerant, but that's not the goal. It's not just to put up with things. It's actually to, to embrace them and to do equity and to be inclusive. And then finally, and not for you, Ms. Riddell, but for council generally, there is an awful lot of work inherent in the implementation process. And so I just encourage council to be looking forward to budget discussions because so much of this is going to be predicated on training of staff and council and others. And there are so many different aspects that will be required that I think if we are going to approve the document as a master plan, we should be now already thinking about the resources and particularly some financial resources that we will require to put a solid foundation under this plan because it can't be achieved just by writing it on the page. And as you look through, there are so many opportunities for training, gender-based training, indigenous training, all sorts of training. And it's required throughout the organization. So there is going to be a significant cost to educate ourselves, I think. Other than that, I do appreciate the work tremendously. I, I sat on the, on the Inclusion Committee and I appreciate how many people put in hours and hours of work and then many more hours behind the scenes. So thank you, Ms. Riddell, for all that you and your, your staff have done to bring this to us.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. Any other comments from council or questions for Ms. Riddell? Councilor Malick.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall and through you to Ms. Riddell. I do want to recognize a tremendous amount of work that's been done in this document and the, and the months, well, actually over the last two years of pulling this very, very detailed document together. I, I did, did not see in the document though, and I don't want to necessarily call it a formal reporting back to council. But how is council updated as to progress in the various initiatives that are highlighted throughout the plan?
Ms. Riddell.
Thanks for that question. Through you, Deputy Mayor Hall, through to Councilor Malick. That's a great question. There is a section of the plan called Measuring Success where it's not explicitly described, but I feel like one of the next steps administration would take, should this plan be adopted, is to really outline how are we going to track our progress in the implementation of this plan? So it would be far more than simply that column to the far right that says status. There would be, you know, where are we at? Who's taking the lead? What kinds of benchmarks are we putting in place for ourselves? How are we evaluating that? And I feel in that process that we would be quite careful to set out a plan to report on our progress. But I'm also going to write that down just to make sure that, that it be included in that measuring success portion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Riddell. Any other comments from council? Councilor Demota.
Yeah, I appreciate all this, this whole thing in front of us. And thank you, Ms. Riddell and your staff for the thought and the preparation by us. It's, it's very well done. And I, I just wanted to echo the mayor's sentiment and, and of the word tolerance. I, I think people are tired of being tolerated. So I added that added level of respect, I think, is, is much appreciated. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Demota. I do not see any other hands up. And I am wondering if a councillor would like to make the motion to adopt this map, this plan? Councilor Waxer. You would like, like to make that motion? Would we need to add just a discussion around the word tolerance? Will that be in, in the motion as well? Or is it just going to be assumed, Ms. Riddell?
I have made note of all the items, Deputy Mayor Hall through to all of council that were noted today and those could be included as noted amendments.
Thank you for that, Ms. Riddell. So there is a motion on the table from Councilor Waxer. I will call the question. All in favor? There are none opposed and that motion is carried. Thank you very much, Ms. Riddell, for all your hard work. Moving on to I, new business item number 7.4, the world tree. I know we have another attachment. And I will pass it on to, I believe, Mr. Given.
Just again, a brief introduction, Deputy Mayor Hall, Ms. Riddell is here as well. She's the writer of the report and she can speak to the details. But administration is seeking direction from council on the level of support that they wish to provide to the World Tree event. There are a couple of different alternatives that are contained in the report that the municipality could continue to support the event as it has been happening over the last number of years in relocating a tree, harvesting a tree and relocating it to Robson Park. Administration could do that or could refocus on transplanting a tree one time. Or council could direct the administration that this should be a community-led event and that the municipality should discontinue its support. There are more details obviously in the report that council members have all read. And Ms. Riddell is here to provide any additional context or answer any questions for you.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Ms. Riddell.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall, through you to all of council. As Mr. Given just described, this is a report coming to council or to committee at the whole after the November 9th meeting where a committee directed administration to provide the support requested to the World Tree team for this past Christmas season, the 2021. And then bring forward a report with recommendations on the best way to provide support going forward. So with that direction, Community Development met with the World Tree team, which consists of three community members that have been kind of pioneering this initiative in our community since 2018. Penny Bayfield, Tradi Gola and Marcy Duandal. And we just talked about what kinds of, what does the future hold for this group? And, and what kind of municipal support would they be seeking? So as Mr. Given outlined, the municipality could continue to support the World Tree team in their efforts to harvest and plant a world tree in Robson Park in future years. The World Tree team has expressed interest in transplanting a tree rather than harvesting one each year in Robson Park. The reason being that in fact, when they did the breakdown of numbers, it was more financially viable to transplant a tree rather than to keep purchasing, whether it's purchasing a Christmas tree or just harvesting a tree each year. And when asked about using the existing trees in the park, we just tried to explore all the different options. They explained that it's challenging and that it doesn't fit with the vision for the world tree because you can't kind of stand around the tree. And also the branches are not low enough to really work for young children to be having, hanging ornaments. So under the, the discussion section of the report, there's two images. One indicating the X is intended to indicate the existing location of the world tree. So they're not proposing any sort of new location. And that's where they would like to have a permanent tree planted. And the second photo is just showing a young child putting an ornament on the tree. So in the discussions with the World Tree team, there are no financial implications to the municipality regardless of the choice. So the World Tree team does have the funds available to cover the cost of transplanting a permanent tree or of continuing to harvest and place a tree each year. I'm available to answer any questions. I think that summarizes the report and I'm understanding that, that everyone's already read it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Riddell. Councilor Demota.
Thank you, my ears. You know, I've been in support of this since day one, since the first tree that we had. And I think it's a good way forward. I think it's something that we can, you know, the community members can watch grow, you know, into, into a nice big tree that we can all embrace over time. Many communities around the world, particularly in North America, you know, have this type of tree in their community. So I would consider maybe even putting some more money towards it as far as having some, some infrastructure in place, whether that's going to be seats, but particularly so electric. You know, I, I know that we have some capabilities there, but to have some power there to run lights and stuff for the year, I think that we, if we're going to do this, we'll do it right off like, and, and think of everything possible that we can make this thing. So it, it's successful for many years to come.
Thank you, Councilor Demota. I have, I, I too am in support of this initiative. I have a question, I guess it'd be for administration. I know that we did approve money in the capital budget, I believe, for a strategic plan for this park or a plan for this Robson Park. How would that tie into this, the World Tree initiative? I am, I am a supporter of the World Tree, just so, you know, I'm just wondering how them, we, we do have money aside to make a plan for the park.
Deputy Mayor Hall, I'll take that one. So administration hasn't yet initiated the redevelopment plans. We plan to engage a firm to help us with that over the next little while. And we would essentially identify if council, sorry, if council provides the direction to place a permanent tree, we would see that as one of the fixed items that we would inform the consultants of. So sort of saying the, the, this space has these assets that currently exist and we would identify the world tree as one of those assets that the designers would take into account when they're providing forward-looking recommendations.
Thank you very much, Mr. Given. Are there any other comments or questions for Ms. Riddell or administration regarding this? I don't see any hands, but again, you have to leave them up a little bit longer. Okay, I don't see any, any hands up. Do I have a councillor willing to make this motion? Councilor Keller-Hampe.
I make a motion that committee direct administration assist the World Tree team in obtaining and planting a permanent world tree in Robson Park. We can't see the location of the existing world tree.
Thank you very much for that, Councilor Keller-Hampe. I will open the floor to debate, but I don't see any hands. And I will call the question. All in favor? I don't see Rico or Councilor Demota's hand, but I'm going to assume with his enthusiastic, there it is. There are none opposed, this motion is carried. Thank you again, Ms. Riddell, for your reports. Moving on to item 7.5, garage suites feedback. I'm going to pass it over to Mr. Given.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Hall. On January 11th, council received information from Parks Canada with respect to their proposed standards for garage suites. At the time, Parks Canada requested the municipality provide some feedback on the concept. And at that time, committee directed administration to request further particulars in regards to parking requirements, service standards. Council did discuss this issue briefly at the intergovernmental meeting on February 1st with Parks to get some additional clarity. And since then, administration has reviewed the proposal from an opera municipal operational perspective and has attached information for council. I'll maybe start at the, start at the end with our recommendations or start at the top of the report. Administration is recommending that council endorse the concept of garage suites, subject to their exclusive use as monthly accommodation. And that's in contrast to nightly accommodation. And administration is further recommending that committee give us direction to return to a future meeting with options to mitigate two specific issues. First, emergency access and then second, water and wastewater capacity. There were a number of other municipal operational issues that were identified and I'll go through them briefly. But I'll just say that those two, emergency access and water and wastewater capacity were the ones that we saw as primary concerns that may be able to be mitigated or may influence where would be appropriate for a garage suite. So that's why we're suggesting that council should give us that direction to come back with mitigating approaches. And the reason that we're suggesting coming back to committee with mitigating approaches is we would like to have the opportunity to work directly with Parks to, so that we can have that dialogue about the municipal issues and ways that we might be able to satisfy those through the parks approvals process. So at a high level, garage suites have a significant opportunity to provide new housing units within the existing footprint of the municipality of Jasper. They are an appropriate form of infill housing that's being widely used across North America for many years and is being increasingly used by municipalities here in, in Alberta. That said, there are some potential impacts on municipal operations that need to be considered. And as I said, they are contained in the report under the summary of municipal operational perspectives. The main areas, and I'll just sort of do these in bullet point form rather than reading them all out for you, because as I said, I know that you've all read the reports. From the operations and fire perspective, there's an acknowledgement that having dwelling units that essentially front onto a laneway means that people will probably want to have an increased service standard for maintenance in that lane way. That increased service standard would also That increased service standard would also be something that would be very important on our firefighting team's mind if they required access to the lane way to, to fight any kind of fire. That said, you know, firefighting is something that we need to do. In any case, there is always the potential that there could be a fire in a garage, a normal garage today. And our fire department would reasonably still want to have good access there. And so that probably speaks to a balance sort of view that it's not just garage suites that would demand increased service to alleyways. But administration didn't want to highlight this because it is the potential that in the future, you would have residents requesting increased levels of service, which could impact municipal costs. The second item closely related to this was the potential for constrained access for emergency vehicles. Some of our firefighting, much of our firefighting equipment is actually quite large. And some alleyways may present challenges, particularly if they're not well maintained, but could present challenges for, for fire vehicles to access them. And again, I think that comes with the caveat that we already face the risk if there is a structure fire at the rear of the property that we have to figure out how to access that today. And so that's why the recommendation is that we look at mitigating approaches for this. It's not that, it's not that we don't already face a risk here. It is that we may be increasing our exposure and we just need to think through that. Associated, again, in the emergency side of things is that there is of course limited access to fire hydrants. We don't have fire hydrants in alleys there in the fronts of properties. And so access to water may be a challenge. And again, this same issue does apply today. So whether we have garage suites or not, we still run the risk that there could be a fire at the rear of a property or in a garage of a property that's on an alleyway. And we would still have this, still face the same challenge. A minor issue that was identified, again, from the emergency response side, we rely on, at least in part, on visible addresses to allow our emergency response vehicles to make it to the right location. And so we would advise that it is wise to include the address information so that they're clearly visible from the lane. This is a relatively minor thing that we believe parks would be more than happy to include in their permitting process. And so that's why it's not one of the major recommendations. Can be probably handled quite easily. The status is PHAs and the need for business licensing by law identified that were garage suites to be used as PHAs, there would be a need for our bylaw team to be informed of that. So we could follow appropriate business licensing processes. This may be a bit of a mute point because I think that there is a common agreement and understanding that garage suites are intended for monthly rental, not for nightly rental or for PHAs, that they're intended to add to the overall housing stock available for residents of Jasper. So this, this concern raised by bylaw is true. And that's why we wanted to just ensure that first motion is there that council beyond the record is confirming that garage suites should only be for monthly housing. Again, from the bylaw perspective, there is a concern about on-street parking and the potential for garage suites to increase the amount of on-street parking. This is a bit of a challenge because increasing the amount of on-site parking or, you know, additional parking that's, that's needed on the property may prevent anybody from doing a garage suite. So there is likely a compromise that needs to be made. And even if the development requirements required the additional parking stalls to be provided on site, it is questionable whether we have any sort of authority to require somebody to park in them. You know, we, you know, don't have the ability to require somebody to park in their driveway. If you decide to park on the street in front of your driveway, if you just like to have your driveway free for your bikes and your canoe. You know, the municipality doesn't really have the authority to, to make you park in your driveway today. And that same challenge would exist. I think the, the overall observation here is that if we have more people, there is the potential of more congestion. Again, council has to sort of decide the overall, whether the benefits of additional housing away the risks of potential increased congestion, particularly when these suites would be infill housing and likely the type that would allow people to be living more of their lives without the need for an automobile. So that's, that's an additional question that council have to consider. So there is, there is a concern around that administration again, isn't recommending that there needs to be any additional specific action taken here because over, requiring an over commitment of on-site parking may limit number of garage suites that are built. And if the, the main goal is to get new units built, then that should be the main goal. This is one of the issues that we recommend needs to be mitigated. It has to be with the capacity of our existing water and wastewater systems. I mean, essentially, if you're adding new dwelling units on a pipe that hasn't changed size, it just means you have more people using that pipe and it could present challenges with respect to capacity. There are some areas of the community today where administration does receive complaints from, from utility customers saying that the system is low pressure. That's because there's so many people using, drawing water that at peak times, that the system isn't sized to provide enough supply. We unfortunately do not have full detail that, that would say exactly where exactly which properties would suffer from this. And so the approach that administration would, is recommending is that we discuss the specific issue with parks to identify an appropriate way to address getting that level of detailed information on a proposed development through the parks permitting process. So the municipality could say conceptually, the municipality could have a requirement that a proposed a resident proposing to build a garage suite be required to provide a flow capacity analysis to their property to demonstrate that the capacity exists to serve the property. That's conceptual only in nature, but an example of what we could do to mitigate this concern. Those are the, the major items that were raised by municipal administration. Acknowledging that all of those issues are important. The two main ones, emergency access and water and wastewater system capacity are the ones that administration felt, you know, couldn't be dealt with. Needed to be specifically identified. Let me say that, that way. They need to be specifically identified. And that our support for garage suites should be qualified in that we need to figure out how to, how to manage these emergency access and water wastewater capacity issues. And the council confirmed that garage suites are intended to be for regular residents of Jasper on a monthly basis rather than on for visitors on a nightly basis. And so that's why you have the recommendations that are contained at the start of the report. Deputy Mayor Hall, I'll turn it back to you for any questions or comments from committee.
Thank you very much, Mr. Given. Counselor Demota.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I jumped on this one early because I have to go at 2:30. So I appreciate all this information and, and great work. I think this is like, we're, we're well prepared for discussion on this. So thank you, Mr. Given, through you to, to you through Deputy, Deputy Mayor Hall. I have two questions. And both, I think, are capacity, address capacity. Is there something within the parking authority that we've established for residents to buy in? And considering this, if not, considering this is something different than, than a regular, you know, residential ask, if, if we have to put something into place, is there an opportunity to do that with our, within the regulations?
Deputy Mayor Hall, for Counselor Demota, I will confirm this to be 100% certain because I just don't have it at hand. But yes, I believe that we do have the ability to allow a development to, to pay a cash and move payment of parking stalls. So I'll confirm that that also applies in the case of residential properties. My initial thought was that it may have only been, is usually applied in the case of commercial properties. But so I need to confirm that. I think the question would be, the caution that I would raise for council would be adding too many costs where it becomes not financially viable to build a garage suite. So, so even if we can apply that, it's a good question of whether we should apply, you know, that, that extra bit. Cause if we say a parking stall costs $8,000 and there may be offsite levies that would be charged. And maybe we have something to improve waters, you know, like then all of a sudden, if the municipality is adding $15,000 to the cost of building one of these, it might not become economical for anybody to build them. So I will get further confirmation.
Well, you know, thank you for that. And, and if I may continue, I, I think like my line of questioning is just to talk about it and, and to assess the fair return to the rest of the community because we have to pave the streets and all that. So if we are getting more parking concentrated in, in residential areas and we, those things need to be considered when we're factoring costs. The other one is, what about right sizing meters? We just had a big discussion on utilities. So if things need to be expanded or enhanced because of this, wouldn't we? I know it's going to add another cost, but I mean, if, if, if you're putting more pressure on the system, then you know, it shouldn't be up to the rest of the community to, to pay for that, much like a commercial property, if they're going to get their place right sized, have the, the metering right size for their property couldn't, what we collect from those costs. Those levies go towards the implementation of enhancing our capital.
Deputy Mayor Hall for Counselor Demota, yes, that, that would be the purpose of the offsite levies, certainly. I think just one nuance that I'd raise is it, it probably matters less about the size of the meter than it does about the pipe, you know, the pipe serving the entire neighborhood. So if we have, you know, a whole bunch of, you know, two inch meters on a, you know, three quarter inch line, it doesn't do anybody any good. So that would be the only nuance that I'd say there. But again, this was where that discussion about the, the water capacity would come in. Administration would like to be able to come back and recommend to council what an appropriate contribution would be. Because there is also the, the, the issue that if we charge somebody money towards improving the system, say we charge somebody $2,000 for offsite levies to go towards a water system, well, we can't, we can't improve the water system for a single $2,000 payment. You know, we can't replace everybody's pipes down a block for, for $2,000. So we would need to think that through a little bit more and it would likely influence the capital budgets that council would see, maybe in terms of phasing. We might choose to identify priority areas for service enhancements, identifying that areas that are capable of supporting infill might be the first priority for water upsizing, for example. Again, we don't have that, we don't have that fully fleshed out. And that's the kind of recommendation that we would like to come back to you with.
I really appreciate that. And that answers like just about every single question I had. And I don't support any thought of having PHAs in, and I don't think parks would either, but I just don't think that that's the whole purpose of doing going forward with this. Thank you for your time, everybody.
Thank you very much, Counselor Demota. Are there any other comments or questions from council? Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall. In the absence of questions for administration, I'm prepared to make a motion to just keep us moving along. I appreciate the thoroughness of the report. So I think it, it lends itself to very few questions. I will make the following motion, if I may then, and it deviates just slightly from the recommendation before us. Firstly, that council, pardon me, the committee recommend council endorse the concept of garage suites, subject to their exclusive use as residential accommodation. I don't think the term matters. I think what matters is that it's for residents, not for, for visitors. And secondly, that committee direct administration to return to a future committee meeting with options to address, I use that word rather than mitigate, because sometimes there is not a mitigation, but we should still be aware, to address the following issues. Emergency access, user access, water, wastewater, solid waste and recycling capacity, parking and enforcement. And if I can speak briefly to the motion, I appreciate that water and wastewater capacity are, are critical. But if we start having lanes, carriage houses and garage suites approved, some of the applicants undoubtedly will be those who now gratuitously harbor our solid waste bins. And with the prospect of those diminishing and needs rising, we're going to have to figure out potentially how we address solid waste. And it's a problem already, and this will only make it more acute and recycling the same. So I don't suggest that any of these are impossible. I'm not sure what the mitigations or, or options might be, but I think it's an opportune time to take a look at all of that. I add user access because as Mr. Given said, we probably have obligations already for emergency access. But to what extent will this subject the municipality to higher standards for say snow clearing, just for residents who, who live in lanes? Will it impact our potential obligation at least to put hard services on lanes that are now just gravel lanes? So there are other issues to be considered. And then there is, as Mr. Given indicated, the, the ongoing issue of parking and even if parking stalls are required, is there an enforcement capability or, or likelihood? So all issues that I think could be addressed right now and just brought to council's attention, but overall a really exciting prospect. I'm glad that Parks Canada has brought it to our attention. I, I think there is no doubt that they intended it not for PHAs, but for residential accommodation. And, and I support that. But our, our endorsement of that doesn't change. I think their intent whatsoever. But it's an excellent report that we have, and I think a concept that can be furthered for the benefit of the community. So I, I fully support it and make that motion, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you for your motion, Mayor Ireland. I will open the floor to debate. Questions? I don't see any hands. I'll go back and forth a couple of times. Okay. The question is on the table. I will call the question. All in favor? There are none opposed. That motion carries. Moving on to item 7.6 engagement invitation for APPS, APPS transportation study. Counselor Melnick.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall and to fellow council members. I have this on the agenda to seek council's endorsement for both council, Counselor Waxer and myself to attend a public session that we have been invited to by the solicitor general late last year to speak about the current proposal for the Alberta provincial police service and the transitional study work that has been done. Just a bit of a quick background. On January 19th, I believe Counselor Waxer and myself attended Alberta municipalities policing summit with counselors and mayors from across province to talk about this particular initiative by the province as well. Counselor Waxer and myself did attend a number, each of us individually. We attended the provincial, sorry, the police federation, sorry, National Police Federation presentations who were basically representing the RCMP and speaking against this proposal by the provincial government. And I think it's important that we have representation. We have the opportunity to present in person on the 31st of March in Edson to the traveling roadshow, I guess is the best way of putting it, where the provincial government has, has asked elected officials to meet in person in order to get feedback. I will also defer to Counselor Waxer. We've had some discussion about specific concerns to Jasper, and I am very happy that to have Counselor Waxer to speak to, to some of this as well because of her involvement over the last number of years and relationship that we have with our agencies and our first responders and our police department here in Jasper, which we feel is unique in the province. And we need to be represented at this, at this opportunity with the provincial government.
Thank you, Counselor Melnick. Counselor Waxer?
Thank you, Counselor Melnick. I reviewed the Alberta Municipalities updated question list and a couple of things that I think really are pertinent to the municipality of Jasper would be for housing, for one thing, that currently, I think, the RCMP own a number of homes in Jasper that allow people coming into Jasper to to be able to transition easily into working in the community without dealing with the housing issues. So I my one question I would add to the list is what would happen with housing in the Jasper context for Alberta policing service? The other thing that probably really caught my eye was the the recommendation of co co-locating policing services with with community services. And I wondered how well, there certainly would be some tremendous assets to that. But I think there could also be some real concerns with that. In my experience over the years, I would say that that many of the most vulnerable people may have difficulty accessing service out of a policing building. I I think I think that there's lots of important questions, many more. There was multiple page document produced by the Alberta Municipalities that raised some really important questions. I think it's absolutely critical the municipality Jasper be represented at at those consultations and have a voice.
Thank you, Counselor Waxer. Other, Counselor Melnick, do you wish to speak further?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall, and thank you, Counselor Waxer. In essence, we're asking council's endorsement to allow us to attend that session and also recognizing that there'll be travel costs and per diem costs to do that. And certainly, we are happy to do that. And we'll continue to work towards making sure we have an opportunity to address any concerns that we may hear in the community as it relates to this issue.
Thank you, Counselor Melnick. The council are willing to I guess, Mayor Ireland.
I will make a motion that committee recommend that council approve the attendance of Counselor Melnick and Counselor Waxer at the described session.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland. Comments? I don't see any. I will call the question. All in favor. They're not opposed. That motion is carried. Okay, moving on to item eight correspondence. The Parks Canada 2021 Land Use Planning and Development Report. Mr. Given.
Yes, thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Hall. So this comes from our colleagues at Parks Canada who are providing an annual report to council in the community on development permit statistics. Obviously, this isn't municipal administration's information, but I will cover some of the highlights that stood out for us. First, municipal land rent for 2021 was just under $700,000. I know the municipality has often suggested that there's a breakdown between land rent and planning and development services. And in looking back at the agreement for the establishment of the municipality, there isn't actually such a distinction. It really is the municipalities required to pay land rent. And so in the past, council may have heard different numbers. And I think that's because we were applying a conceptual breakdown that actually doesn't exist. This is the total amount that was paid for land rent by the municipality in 2021. Lower below, there is information on the number of development permits that have been issued in a number of different categories. You can see that generally, there is a rebound in permitting from the 2020 year. So I think as COVID impacted, you know, delivery of in-person services, development permitting would have been one of those things. And so you can see things took a dip in 2020 and started to rebound slightly in 2021. Other than occupancy permits and completion certificates, which were down slightly year over year, not not necessarily in a material way, but down slightly. And there was a significant rebound in compliance inspections. And again, I think that recognizes both the fact that in-person services were more readily deliverable and also that there are a number of lease lease renewals that are coming up. And parks had had undertaken a significant amount of work to in advance to do those compliance inspections. Also in that table, you'll see the total amount of development expense that is identified by parks, and this is essentially parks identification of how much it costs to do planning and development services. They suggest that there is about $471,000 in costs and revenue of about $162,000. Later on, in the report, does provide a breakdown of exactly how parks arrived at those numbers. Wages and benefits for the staff are approximately $411,000. And then additional support from national office and other professionals is an additional $60,000, leading to that $471 total. The report also mentions payment in lieu of taxes. This is the money that has contributed from the federal government to municipal governments across across Canada, in fact. You can see that that number has gone up in 2021 to 662,000. And in 2020, it was 491,000. A couple of important things to note about payment in lieu of taxes. First, it is directly reflective of municipal mill rates. And so if the municipality increases or decreases mill rates, then the federal government's contribution in terms of property tax, which is our payment in lieu of property tax would go up and down. And so that 2020 dip that you see is reflective of the 2020 action that the council took to lower property taxes in response to COVID. And so we actually lowered the amount that that the federal government paid us in payment lieu of taxes. The other important thing to keep in mind about payment in lieu of taxes is that this is not a connection between Parks Canada and the municipality of Jasper. This is essentially an arrangement between the federal government and municipal governments across Canada. So we do not receive money from Parks Canada for payment lieu of taxes. We receive money from the Government of Canada for payment lieu of taxes. And in 20 and 2020, there were approximate, which is the year, the most recent statistics that we can find available. In Alberta, in 2020, there are approximately 130 other municipal governments that received payment in lieu of taxes from the federal government. And across Canada, there are over 1,200 municipalities that receive payment in lieu of taxes. So this is not an arrangement that is unique to Jasper, but it is one of the examples of the entanglements between municipal governments and federal government. A bit of a sampling, just for your interest, of payment in lieu of taxes in some other Alberta municipalities for 2020 year, again, which is the most recent year we can find statistics. Cold Lake received $5 million in payment in lieu of taxes. Edmonton received $4.1 million. The MD of Greenview received $626,000. Lethbridge County received $805,000, and the village of Coops received $122,000. So just to give a bit of a sampling, certainly it is important that the federal government is contributing to local services through payment in lieu of taxes, but that is not an arrangement that is unique to Jasper in any way. It is actually very common and applied equally across all of Canada. The one thing is, of course, that is unique is that Jasper has to pay land rent, which none of those other 1,200 municipalities, other than our friends in Banff, are required to pay. With that, Deputy Mayor Hall, that's a bit of an overview of the permit statistics from Parks Canada in their annual report. I certainly want to acknowledge our colleagues at Parks and providing this information to council and the community in a way that's publicly accessible now that it's a part of the council public agenda and part of the record.
Thank you very much for that, Mr. Given. Any questions from council? I don't see any hands up. Do we need to move to accept this as information?
We should. Deputy Mayor Hall have a motion received for information.
Okay. Do you have a councilor willing to make that motion? Counselor Waxer? The question is on the table. I will call the question. All in favor. And that motion is carried. Excellent. Item nine, motion action list.
Deputy Mayor Hall, I will be as brief as possible, appreciating it's been a long day, and we have some folks that have to leave. There are a couple of slight amendments. You'll see the relationship with the JCTS and Friends of Jasper. We're proposing to change that date to March, so we'll bring forward that report next month. And that's because we advanced the Equity Diversity and Inclusion Policy Report, which came to you today. So we're recommending that we can delete the Equity Diversity and Inclusion Master Plan item because it's been delivered, and we're going to bump the the other one to March. The other item that's been delivered today is the World Treaty Report, so that item could be struck off the list as well. So administration would recommend that committee receive the approve the updates to the motion action list as noted.
Thank you, Mr. Given. We need a council to make that motion to accept the motion action, Counselor Melnick.
I make that motion to adjust the motion action list as presented.
Thank you very much. I will call the question. All in favor. And there are none opposed that is carried. Item number 10, council appointment to boards and committees. Anyone have anything to report from the last week or are we coming up? Counselor Melnick.
I'll be attending the monthly Jasper Yellowhead Historical Society meeting this evening. And we'll report back to council as appropriate.
Thank you very much for that. Counselor, anyone else? Sorry, I'm scrolling around. I was at the Adult Community Conversation last Wednesday and sat in a mental health promotion breakout room, which was very eye opening. I'm taking the community helpers training tomorrow all day, so fresh off of an outbreak room, learning a bunch of new information. I'm very excited to be at that course tomorrow. Does anybody else have anything else to report? I don't see any hands. I will move to upcoming events. The JPCC General Meeting is tomorrow at 7:30 AM. I wondered if that was a typo, but maybe it maybe it's right. I guess people meet that early. We have a council Zoom meeting on February 10th with our MLA critic from Municipal Affairs, which is exciting. NEMMA is on next Wednesday at the Brew Pub from 5 till 7. Our emergency management training, which has been confirmed in person for the 28th. And very exciting, our strat planning sessions are coming up the beginning of April. Anybody want to add anything else before we adjourn our meeting? I feel like Counselor Demota, oh, no, you're moving. I thought maybe you were frozen. You're still there. Counselor Keller-Heremy.
I will be attending the Jasper Chamber of Commerce Breakfast Meeting tomorrow morning at 6:00.
So it is a breakfast meeting. Yes, I saw that on the email. I love breakfast, but I will be at the helpers training. Do I have a counselor that would like to make a motion to adjourn our meeting? Counselor Keller-Heremy. I will call the question before Counselor Demota has to go. All in favor. Excellent. Meeting is adjourned at 2:31. Thank you all very much, council, for a great meeting, helping me through my technical difficulties once again. And I hope you guys have a wonderful Tuesday. Thank you, public, for joining us.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Hall, and thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Great meeting. Great debates today.
Absolutely.